Well, good evening, folks. The time is 6:30 PM. Today is Tuesday, March 15th, 2022. I'd like to invite you and welcome you to the special meeting of the Emeryville City Council. I will just remind everyone that for the record pursuant to Assembly Bill 361, the governor has entered a state of emergency order for the state of California in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. And jurisdictions like Emeryville are authorized to conduct meetings via teleconference pursuant to that exemption to the Brown Act, provided the governor's order remains in place and that we make findings in each of our board meetings every 30 days, that the necessity of protecting the safety and health of the public is best suited by us conducting these meetings via teleconference. So that's what we're doing tonight. Members of the public can participate in these meetings nonetheless by joining us via the online link that's provided on the agenda and using the raise hand feature on Zoom, or by pressing star nine if you're joining us by telephone. And I will recognize your hand at the appropriate time for public comment in any of these meetings. Just to frame, folks, the agenda for the evening, for those who are joining, we have a series of small, short meetings before we get to our regular city council meeting, which will be at 7:16 PM this evening. So at that time, I'd like to ask if the city clerk would please take the roll call.
Councilmember Donahue?
Here.
Councilmember Martinez?
Here.
Councilmember Welch?
Here.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Here.
And Mayor Bouders?
Here. Thank you all for being here. Now is the time to approve the final agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda for this evening?
I move approval of the final agenda for this special meeting.
All second.
Motion has been made by Member Donahue, seconded by Vice Mayor Medina to approve this agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouders?
Aye. The agenda has been approved. Members, are there any ex parte communications that you wish to report tonight? Seeing none, now is the opportunity for public comment for items not on the agenda. Members of the public who wish to comment about an item not on the agenda will be afforded two minutes to do so in this meeting. You can use the raise hand feature, or as I mentioned, press star nine. There will be an opportunity to comment on each of the agenda items when we reach those. Do any members have comments? I see no hands. Charity, we receive electronic comment cards?
We did not.
Okay, thank you. Public comment is now closed. We'll move to the meat of our agenda tonight, which is to review and receive updates from three of our city resident committees, our advisory committees. We will have the Public Art Committee, the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, and the Housing Committees' reports tonight. So for item 6.1, I'd like to first welcome the staff and resident chairs and representatives of the city's Public Art Committee for their report on their committee goals, principles, and accomplishments, as well as their plans for this coming year. And I believe I'll turn it over to Amber Evans and Sharon Wiltshire.
Thank you, Mayor Donahue and Bouders. Good evening. I am just here to pass the baton to co-chair Sharon Wiltshire, and to note that Emily McPartland was going to be co-chairing as well tonight, this presentation, but because of health issues is not able to attend. But I know she is here in spirit. Welcome, Sharon.
Thank you. So, good evening, Mayor Bouders and councilmembers. Sharon Wiltshire, co-chair of the city's Public Art Committee, or PAC. And as Sherry mentioned, I'm here tonight to share our 2021 activities and also our plans for 2022. Next slide, please. So, a major milestone for us in 2021 was the Nigel Sussman mural, Emeryville Treasure Map. In November, Mayor Martinez unveiled Nigel's mural, aptly named Emeryville Treasure Map, to a large gathering at 1451 Sherwin. Following the 2020 council approval of the mural guidelines within the framework of the city's Public Art Master Plan, our mural program was launched in 2021 with a commission on the privately owned property at Sherwin at Horton on a bike boulevard. The property owner, building tenants, neighboring property owners, and residents were involved in the process. Artist Nigel Sussman's interpretation of our general theme, Neighborhood by the Bay, A Place to Call Home, resulted in his playful treasure map of people, places, and critters to be recognized and sometimes discovered in our city. His process for creating the mural was fascinating, and he engaged with many of us in the neighborhood during the time that he was creating the mural while he was up on his scissor lift. At the unveiling, there were over 60 people who arrived by foot or on bikes for the afternoon with opening remarks by Nigel, excuse me, opening remarks by the mayor, followed by Nigel's informational presentation, and then a lively Q and A. Refreshments were generously provided to all by the building tenants, Double Rainbow, and Petit Pope. Coincidentally, the unveiling for this mural happened the same weekend as the opening of the Bay Street Bridge, which also brought an incredible number of pedestrians and cyclists to the neighborhood. As outreach for our mural program, the city's 2022 business license applications included information on the mural program and an opportunity for businesses to express their interest in providing their property as a site to be considered for future murals, a public-private partnership. Next slide, please. So, 2021 was a big year for the city's Public Art Program. Efforts throughout 2021 in celebration of 30 years of municipally funded public art culminated in a reception and a tour at City Hall on the 25th anniversary of the city. And I'll have more information about each of these bullet points, but banners in City Hall, purchase awards, and artwork donation, and an expanded online audio tour of City Hall works. It's become a tradition to have our December committee meeting replaced by an art reception at City Hall. However, still within the pandemic, the stars aligned for us to have a brief window of time in December when we could indeed hold an event at City Hall, a reception outdoors with masks, with small groups then dispersed throughout City Hall for art tours. The well-attended event included artist comments from both the 2020 and the 2021 Purchase Award honorees, once again with a great Q and A session, and then followed by a tour of artworks in City Hall with the artists. Not that all of our events are food-centric, but we do love reasons to celebrate, and reception small bikes were provided by Emeryville's Potatoes and Wallys. Coincidentally, our December 2nd reception coincided exactly to the day in 1896 that Emeryville was founded by Joseph Emory. 30 years for the city's award-winning Art in Public Places program, over 48 artists commissioned or works purchased, and over 350 works combined in public and private spaces. Next slide, please. New banners in City Hall. So, 2020, in 2020, the Emeryville Celebration of the Arts Exhibition banners were created, and they were reprinted, double-sided, in 2021 and installed in City Hall. As you may remember, in 2020, as an effort to bring the virtual 34th Annual Emeryville Art Exhibition to the public, street banners were designed incorporating the artwork of 30 exhibiting artists with care taken to present a wide range of artwork mediums and styles. The PAC was so taken with both the beauty and the concept of these banners that we explored the possibility of having them reprinted for City Hall's atrium and mezzanine. Now reprinted, double-sided, the 15 banners represented the work of all 30 artists. The new banners replaced decades-old banners that had faded, giving City Hall a nice facelift. So when I said that the PAC's exploration of this project, et cetera, I mean, I want to just mention, and I could mention it for every item that's in our PowerPoint, this exploration involved Amber's work, working out the many details within City Hall with fabricators and with installers. Next slide, please. Purchase Awards. So, two beautiful digital photographic prints of musicians Christian Sands and Reuben Rogers by photographer Ronald Davis were installed in City Hall. This is the 16th year for this successful program placing permanent artworks in city facilities, including City Hall, the Senior Center, Police Station, and ECCO. This program and the Bus Shelter program are our only programs requiring an artist to live or work in Emeryville, and in this case, also participating in the annual Emeryville Art Exhibition. These two evocative photographic portraits by artist Ronald Davis capturing the performer so beautifully were installed in prominent alcoves on the first and second floor of City Hall in locations that were selected by the artist. But because of the pandemic, this was actually also the first time for many to view the paintings stuck, which was the 2020 purchase from artist Pravind Badia. We were so happy to be able to celebrate the artwork, the artists, and the program in real time this December. Next slide, please. So, in 2020, we received a donation of artwork from the estate of Joseph Di Stefano, his sculpture, Cleve. And for our reception in December, the work was prominently displayed in the main lobby of City Hall for the reception celebration of the 25th anniversary. So there's a process for acceptance of artwork that's proposed to be gifted to the city's Public Art Program, and this includes Public Art Committee review of aesthetic considerations, craftsmanship, installation, maintenance, and then a recommendation to City Hall for your approval. Joe was a valued and colorful member of the Emeryville Arts Community for over 30 years. His work collected in the Bay Area and commissioned for many public art installations, the Federal Building in Oakland, Bart stations, and other transit stations, and more. It took us a while during this time of supply chain delays to procure a pedestal for his piece, and we're continued to be grateful for the generosity of Joe's family with this donation, and also their patience on the installation. Next slide, please. Autocast Audio Tour of City Hall Artworks. 25 artists with works in City Hall through the Purchase Award or artwork donation are included in an audio tour of City Hall with both biography readings and many recordings from the artists themselves about their works and the inspiration they take from Emeryville. The Autocast app can also take you on a walking tour of public art in Emeryville and key spots in our cultural arts district. However, I just want to mention that these City Hall interviews and the artist-owned words are really worth a listen, as you're certainly going to learn more about their work, but also their practice and a lot of the inspiration that they take from either living or working here in Emeryville. We're looking into coordinating QR codes with the Autocast app on all of our public art commissions, allowing you to scan the code and be directed to information on that particular artwork, whether it's City Hall or in other city public spaces. Next slide, please. Our continuing bus shelter installation. So this is Phase 6 of the Temporary Public Art Program at four bus shelters contracted to run through August of 2023. Eight local artists installed four works for four months, and in 2021, the artists featured and whose works are depicted here, Artna Horsting, Lenore McDonald, and Kazuko Watanabe. Over the past 13 years, 24 artists who live or work in Emeryville have received commissions for 96 original artworks installed in four Emeryville bus shelters. Another seven, representing 28 works of art, were selected for this Phase 6 and installation through August of 2023. Our continuing theme of flora and fauna was expanded in Phase 6 to fertile ground, art, and innovation. This more expansive theme allows for a broader response and more liberal interpretation while being inclusive with the original theme of flora and fauna. While enlivening our streetscapes, these installations also provide additional information about the artists, their work, and our program. Currently on view through April is work by artist Joey Rose, reminding us all to protect our flora and fauna with part of his message of no dumping to the bay. And also, in 2022, other artists will be Jessalyn Holland and Nora Pauls. The PAC is proud of its 2021 accomplishments and the successful 30 years of programs for the city's Art in Public Places program. Building on the last three decades, we now look forward to 2022, and we'd like to share our goals with you. Next slide, please. So, art commissions. Art commissions in 22 may include a sculpture by artist Ned Khan at Point Emory, and we did include that imagery in our presentation last year, and/or something at City Hall, and also a mural by Guillermo Olivier. Ned Khan at Point Emory. This project continues to await the completion of the riprap restoration at Point Emory concurrent with BCDC's review of the work. Ned has lived in the Bay Area for decades, and his works often center on the motion of wind or water with the intent to capture an invisible aspect of nature and make it visible. His early work developed through his affiliation with Exploratorium over 30 years ago. His work can now be found throughout the United States and Europe. In 2003, he was a recipient of a MacArthur Foundation Genius Grant, and we really look forward to his piece on our waterfront. Ned has also presented a concept for proposal here at City Hall, but further development of that piece awaits the final design of the Center for the Arts. But something a little bit different, this hasn't happened before, during the selection process for the Sherwin Avenue mural, the selection panelists were also impressed with the submission by artist Guillaume Olivier, and they passed that information and interest on to the PAC. As a result, the PAC has recommended this additional mural, and the imagery is shown here, for installation, and we and the artists are currently looking for an appropriate wall. And we welcome all of you to also be looking for a great wall for this piece. Next slide, please. Community Grants for the Visual Arts. PAC has recommended community grants for visual arts for council approval in time for summer release, and we thank you because at your last council meeting, you approved this pilot program. For many years, the PAC has discussed a process that would allow artists to propose a project directly to the PAC for consideration and funding. Our commissions traditionally work in reverse order, with PAC creating or identifying a potential project, and then issuing an RFP or RFQ. But this year, we looked more closely in ways in which we might be able to accomplish this goal by complementing an existing city format or program. And through this research, a pilot program for grants to the visual arts in consort with the existing City of Emeryville Grants Program was developed. To support the artistic merits of any recommended projects, they'll be reviewed a final time by the full PAC before moving to City Council for approval. We're envisioning the possibility of up to five projects, each with a mini grant of $10,000. And we certainly, as I mentioned, we do appreciate the city's recent support, allowing us to move forward with the pilot, and actually moving forward with it today, thanks to Amber. The information and application just went live this afternoon, so application deadlines are on May the 1st, and information can be found on the city's website. Next slide, please. Maintenance. I know I've mentioned this last year and probably in earlier years, but our 2022 maintenance priorities include Neighborhood Convergence and Silver Seedy Nocturne. Additionally, with over 80 works in the collection, several others are being reviewed. So maintenance isn't a very glamorous topic, but it's necessary for the proper care of Emeryville's public art collection in ongoing care and maintenance for the permanent works. At the time that the Art in Public Places program was conceived, and even to this day, Emeryville is one of maybe a handful of cities to have a maintenance set aside, so a line item in every one of our commissions is for maintenance, and sooner or later, you have to draw on that reserve. With this in mind, in 2022, we look forward to restoring our national award-winning public art installation at Powell &amp; I-80, Neighborhood Conversions, and bringing it back to close to its original condition. Also on the list this year is Silver Seedy Nocturne, the kinetic sculpture in the reception area at City Hall, our very first Purchase Award, and now in need of a motor replacement. And as I mentioned, with over 80 works, we continue to assess maintenance needs. Next slide, please. So in closing, thank you, and thank you to our council liaison, our new council liaison, Councilmember Welch. We hope you're enjoying our meetings. Thank you, I hope. I hope that's a smile, I don't know. And city staff, of course, city staff, Amber Evans, who's patient and efficient with this very active committee, especially in this past anniversary year. Also to Chad Smalley, and to all of our committee members, my co-chair Emily McPartland, Vice Chair Jean Goldman, members Edith Bresnahan, Harley Johnson, Vicky Josul, Rick DeHade Flores, and Judith Wedder. We currently have an opening on the committee, and we invite anyone interested in what we do to zoom in on the second Thursday of the month for our meetings at 5:30. We do meet on a monthly basis, and as a result, our members make a substantial commitment of their time and talents, both at these meetings, in subcommittee meetings, serving on selection panels, and attending special meetings. And we thank you, Mayor Bouders and councilmembers, for your support and the value you place on the arts in our city, and we look forward to continuing to serve the city in the coming year. And I really hope next year we can do this in real time because we're so excited about the work ahead of us for 2022. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Let's first turn to members of the public who wish to comment on this item. Members of the public who wish to comment will be afforded two minutes to do so. Charity, we receive any written comment cards for this item?
No written comments.
Okay, we have one member of the public who's raised their hand. Please allow Brian Donahue to speak, two minutes. Welcome and go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, go ahead.
Okay, I'm here to speak about the mural by, I believe, the artist is Nigel Sussman at the Sherwin Williams Project at the corner of Sherwin and Horton Street. Mural that was done is really bad. First of all, this artist is doing murals all over the East Bay, and they all have a very similar look, and so it's just one of countless, this mural. So there's no there there. But going further to, I guess, an attempt to make a there there, the artist has made his mural Emeryville-centric, and in so doing, first of all, visually, it's really uninspired, it's really low-minded. But the problem, the bigger problem with it is it's, I would call civic boosterism at best, if not outright propaganda, government propaganda. The mural is there to show everybody how great Emeryville is, and exciting shopping opportunities. The mural shows you where you can go shopping, where stuff is in Emeryville. It's a map, it's correctly called a map. So it is, and it's all about how wonderful Emeryville is. So I'm saying that this is not a proper use of the Art in Public Places program. Emeryville or civic boosterism, it's really low-minded. I think we should be aiming higher and having a kind of a higher caliber of artwork rather than just low-grade civic boosterism, if not outright government propaganda. So I think we should aim higher. It's really, like I said, it's low-minded. And I know of what I speak, I have a degree in art, I'm a practicing sculptor, a stomach sculpture. I actually have a degree. Art is, in fact, objective, to any of you that might think it's all subjective. It's not. And I think you should consider that it's...
Thank you, that's your time.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you. Are there other members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, public comment is now closed, and we'll turn back to discussion. I would like to invite Member Welch to go first as the liaison to the committee.
Just that I'm, I just wanted to comment that I'm just really enjoying being the council liaison, that the discussions are very lively, and this is, you know, one of my first times obviously being a council liaison for a committee, but what my takeaway always is after every meeting is how just thoughtful and passionate all of the members are about how to display public art in our city that not just displays the artist talent, but beautifies our city. So I appreciate that.
Thank you. Do other members of the council wish to comment? Vice Mayor Medina?
I just want to thank the Art Committee and Sharon for such a beautifully presented slideshow. It is rare that I see a slideshow that truly uses the medium well. I'm not surprised, given your background as a visual artist. My cat stared and watched the slideshow the entire time and then hopped off my lap the moment it was gone. I think that was a really great way to remind us all of the visual impact of your committee's work on the city. I really appreciated it. And you know, regarding the comments on the mural, I just have to say that a rose is a rose is a rose. That was...
Okay. Live poetry by the vice mayor. Other members wish to comment? Okay. I would just like to, I would just like to state, similar to Members Welch and Vice Mayor Medina, that I really appreciated the presentation, and it's nice to be in a small community that has got such a good focus on the cultural elements of the community. It's easy to be overlooked as the locus for IKEA and Pixar and not much more. And the truth is that there's a very strong cohort of artists here that are represented even on the city council, and people who are from the creative class are what help keep a community culturally grounded. And I really, I think Sharon Wiltshire will regret her offer to ask for us to submit suggestions for walls. So I will tell you, the one, the Bear Building, where the new entry to the bridge is, the side of the 48 or 4950 Horton Street, I have seen so many people sitting on those benches there, having conversations at the foot of the staircase when I walk my dog. I actually made a mental note the other day that that wall, I was like, that wall should just have something really beautiful on it. I also think, I know that the Courtyard Building will probably not be there, but I really think that the long path that takes people to Stanford between the bridge there, that that long space is a future opportunity to tell a really interesting story along a long path. So there's a bunch of options there, and I would also just note that when you will now bike down 45th Street and there's the pass through to the building, you actually see straight through and you see this big square space on the back of IKEA. So I just want to, I just want to say that there's a real, I've kind of thought there should be a cartoon mural there, like a wily coyote, like the wall ends, like the road ends into the back of the IKEA. So I just want to say, I think there are some really interesting places, and I appreciate the Art Committee's interest in murals, and if you ever need a guest presenter on walls that people see when they turn around corners and corridors, I have a photo album of them on my phone. So, any other members wish to comment? No? Okay, well, I just want to thank the Art Committee for being here this evening and for all the work they do, and I look forward to hosting the bar, as I always do, at the art show this fall. Okay, I believe we're going to move now to item 6.2, which will be a presentation from, drumroll, I believe it's the Bike Pedestrian Advisory Committee, and it is. And I would like to welcome, looks like Matt Anderson and John Sherman are going to be presenting this evening. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, councilmembers, Mayor Bouders, Matt Anderson, Environmental Programs Analyst and Secretary to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. I'm also here to pass the baton to John Sherman, Chair of the BPAC, to report on the committee accomplishments in 2021 and the priorities for 2022.
Thank you, welcome, John.
Great, thank you very much, Matt. And good evening, Mayor Bouders and City Council members. I hope that my PowerPoint presentation doesn't send Vice Mayor Medina's cat running to the back of the room. So if we can go back one slide, please? This back one? There we go, thank you. Looks like we have the old slide back here, but the BPAC, or Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, more commonly known as the BPAC, this is our annual report, and my name is John Sherman, I am the chair of the committee. Next slide, please. So if we look at our definition and purpose of what this committee is off the city's website, it is to provide input and recommendations regarding city policies, priorities, and feedback related to the city's bike pedestrian plan and related initiatives. And it's the, those last two words that are really key to me, it's the related initiatives. So really, anything that involves bike pedestrians with the city, the BPAC has been involved in. Next slide, please. So, goals and principles, work with city council and city staff to improve access, infrastructure, and safety for people who ride a bike, walk, roll, or take transit in Emeryville. Next slide, please. So I have to start off with saying a big, big, big thank you to city council, staff, and our consultants. This was a banner year for Emeryville for bikes and pedestrians. It would be a hard year to beat. The pictures that we have here are at the upper left, the opening of our new pedestrian bike bridge, which was an amazing event for an amazing bridge. The second slide is from the active transportation site, the consultant's... The second slide is from the Active Transportation Site, the consultant's website, where they are gathering information on how we can make our city better for bikes and pedestrians. The ATP process has been amazing, the consultants are doing a fantastic job. And the last slide at the bottom is, one of those things was truly heartwarming for me when I went out to get a picture of it. It's just one of our new, seemingly small, infrastructure improvements, and that's a mid-block crosswalk on San Pablo Avenue. But when I went there to get a picture of this, I saw a guy with his walker that, to me, this is what this improvement was all about. This let this gentleman walk safely across San Pablo Avenue, get refuge in the Center Island, and then move on. Without this crosswalk, this gentleman may not have been able to get to the grocery store and remained independent. So little things make a big difference. Next slide, please? So our accomplishments for 2021, I won't read through all the details on this, but the highlight has been the Active Transportation Plan, providing reviews and input for its development. That has been a huge part of what we've been doing, huge area of focus. And then significant new development projects, working, reviewing projects before they go to Planning Commission, sometimes after they go to the Planning Commission, to provide better input on the nitty-gritty on how the projects can support bikes and pedestrians better. Third area, public works projects, such as the San Pablo Avenue Corridor. Again, the BPAC is an amazing group of people with great insight into all things bike pedestrian, and provided very good input to these projects to make them better projects. And lastly, we've been working on process improvement, and that is really, how can we do, become more fruitful as a committee working with the city to bring ideas from inception to actually getting built? And one of the ways that we've done that just recently is to really get a better sense of focus on what it is that we want. For example, we, just at our last meeting, went through 30 different future agenda items and really consolidated them down to five items, which are going to be our area of focus. So I want to give a shout out to Matt Anderson for this. Matt has been incredibly helpful to me for brainstorming with me for how we can be more effective. And before I move on to the next slide, something for you to think about is, please help us help you. If you, City Council members, or city staff have ideas for how we can be more productive, more fruitful, please let me know. And also a shout out to Vice Mayor Medina for being the liaison, and kind of reminding us every once in a while that it's like, we're a small city, we have limited funds. She keeps us on track, so thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Next slide, please? So priorities for 2022. The top of the list is the Paul Christie Intersection. And when I look at these priorities, this is a little bit confusing, the Paul Christie Intersection has been a high priority for the BPAC. We want it to be a high, 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 the highest priority for the city to work on finding our work to make this a better intersection. We will have another slide on this later. The Active Transportation, we kind of touched on that. We are working diligently with city staff and the consultants to update our Active Transportation Plan. Next item is COVID enhancements. Hopefully, this will be the last year that we will be dealing with this, but I think there have been some really good ideas that have come out of assessing how we can make our city a better place for bikes and pedestrians when we're in challenging times where we need more bike and pedestrian space. And the next bullet item is developmental into planning for bikes and pedestrians. Continue to identify potential concerns resulting from planned development in Emeryville, including increased car traffic, parking conflicts, and different modes of transportation, et cetera. And the next bullet point is wayfinding. This is a recurring theme that's been ongoing for the last several years, and we will be hopefully moving this forward within the next several months. And then lastly is, we're looking for ways to improve the diversity on the BPAC. This is a very, very inclusive group. We have great diversity as far as younger people, older people, people that walk, people that bike, people that have children, people that don't. But what we would really like to see is people of color engaged in our process and taking part in the BPAC. Next slide, please? Another bullet point, enabling micro-mobility, this is the future. I think that's kind of self-explanatory. Education, identify educational and informational barriers for increased pedestrian and cycle access in Emeryville, and propose solutions with the goal of encouraging more biking and walking within the city. Updating city planning guidelines, we are working with the Planning Department on this. Outreach to neighboring cities, we are working with Bike East Bay on this. We are fortunate to have a couple of Bike East Bay members that regularly attend our meetings, we're grateful to them for that. And then we're very excited about the pilot bike lanes on San Pablo Avenue, and looking at determining barriers and options for piloting a bike lane within Emeryville and/or neighboring cities. Next slide, please? So our first priority is the Active Transportation. We will continue to work with staff and consultants to update the city's tenure Active Transportation Plan. Next slide, please? And the Paul Christie Intersection. The BPAC has identified two fundamental problems with this intersection and has identified mitigation measures. Those are a pedestrian-only phase and a no right turn on red signs for that. I wanted to add some bullet points for this that basically says, easy peasy, we can do this, go team, go. So, next slide? In conclusion, our goal is to increase the quality of life for visitors, people who work in Emeryville and residents in the city of Emeryville. People walking, biking, and riding transit should be able to safely and quickly move about the city regardless of age, physical ability, race, sex, gender, sexual orientation, religion, national origin, or immigration status. So, thank you all. Next slide, please? That was it, thank you.
Thank you, John. I'd like to move to public comment. Members of the public who wish to comment on this presentation will be afforded two minutes to do so. Sharon, do we receive electronic submissions prior to this meeting?
No, we have not.
Okay, we have one hand raised right now. Brian Donahue is allowed to speak for two minutes, please.
The city of Emeryville should be congratulated for the San Pablo Avenue mid-block crossing, the new crossing near the Pack and Save. Excellent infrastructure improvement. I don't know whose idea that was. Really good, and a really smart location, right near the senior housing, plus there's a really long block there, and it's kind of right in the middle, so really good. That was a great piece of infrastructure. And of course, the new bike pad bridge is of course great, although I'm concerned how little traffic it has. Maybe a year or two out, we should do a little analysis, find out how many people are using it. I'm kind of surprised how few, I'm thinking maybe it's because of Bay Street is fading, the mall. But anyway, I'm hoping that's all it is. Hopefully, people start using that more. But I want to talk more about that, more than that, about the 800-pound gorilla in the room, and that is the fact that we have a chief of police that thinks that it's perfectly fine for people to park their vehicles in bike lanes. He has said this in an email to me, which I'm, I've released to the council, and I'm going to be releasing to the BPAC soon, and no other chiefs of police in any of our neighboring cities has come to that same conclusion. Only ours is unique in this regard. And so if you're wondering why there's so many vehicles blocking bike lanes in our city, especially around the transit center, it's because there's no negative repercussions for doing it. And so we need to get a handle on this. We need to rein in our chief and have him act like other chiefs do, and I think we need to protect our bike lanes, and we need to have a chief that recognizes that errors on the side of public safety instead of moving goods and services around for businesses. Because that's what he, that's how he's operating right now, and it's completely unacceptable. We need to protect bicycle safety, and we need to fix the chief. Either fire him or fix him.
Thank you, your time is up.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other members of the public who wish to comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring this back for some discussion and feedback, and I'd like to start with Vice Mayor Medina, our liaison to the committee.
Thank you so much. You know, John and all the members of BPAC, I really appreciate your work. It is a committee that puts in lots of time, lots of dedication, lots of passion to make Emeryville a safer space for pedestrians and bicyclists across town. I'm really looking forward to having your input on the ATP as we move forward. I think it's an extremely exciting way for you to influence the next decade of Emeryville's bike and pedestrian infrastructure. And I would like to mention, because I think it's super relevant actually, that the mid-block crossing was the idea of the Avalon Resident Steering Committee. A group of seniors there realized that was a problem for residents to walk all the way to the end of the block. They came to Transportation Committee in 2016, when it was myself and Scott, and presented us with maps that had timed the amount of steps it took seniors to get to the intersection. And Google, when we pull up Google image search, it showed a senior citizen, much like the one that John had shown on this slide, but in the median, because they had been crossing and waiting in walkers in the median to get across that before. So this was really a resident-led effort. They've been meeting with us every step of the way, and I think they deserve a ton of credit for advocating for their community so effectively, and we're so happy to provide them with that infrastructure.
Thank you. Do other members of the council wish to comment on the BPAC report? I will just also extend my appreciation, and I would just like to note, the city is getting a lot of positive attention right now for our efforts on all of these types of mobility issues. I've entertained a large number of inquiries from other cities about things we're doing, and so as the vice mayor noted, residents bringing ideas, our ability to actualize those things, the fact that the Public Works Department, I think, is oriented much differently than it was five or six years ago in terms of its interest and focus on safety of pedestrians and bicyclists over traffic throughput. Having a staff that shares the council's values and philosophies around people-oriented communities is integral to helping us actually deliver projects that make meaningful change in people's lives. We received some of our first funding for the Forte Street redesign for the construction phase, and I have been in discussions with state legislative leaders about securing the balance of that funding so we can turn that project into a delivery project soon. It was noted that the people had concerns about the frequency of movement on the bike bridge. As someone who walks it every day, I would observe that there's a lot of people walking over and exploring Bay Street, actually, who weren't previously doing it. And I think the future potential for that bridge is, you put things in places so that people can find places, and we're soon going to have the BioMed project with a lot of new jobs next year. We will have the 500 new homes at Sherwin-Williams right at the foot of that bridge. A grocery store was just approved for Bay Street Shopping Center, and they have additional work in place to do a food court redesign and other things in that location. So what we've done is we've created a space that prioritizes people-centered movement around all of those things, jobs, housing, resources, and shopping. So I'm really looking forward to its use, and I would say I see people on it all the time, as someone who uses it. So I feel very confident that was a good investment, and I'm looking forward for us to bringing some more projects online. Return to Vice Mayor Medina?
I forgot to give a second shout out to BPAC. They actually did not, you know, give themselves accolades for this, but BPAC originated the Doyle Hall's closure in between the two parks. That was an idea that popped out out of BPAC Committee, and our Public Works team said, "We can do that."
Yep. Member Donahue?
I just wanted to say that for our neighborhood here at the Artist Co-op, that new bridge is so significant. It is a kind of relief at the end of the day, meaning that you can stroll a block or two and get on the bridge and see the sunset. This is something we didn't have. Seeing the sunset over the water, the bay is just aesthetically remarkable. And I think it's a significant improvement for walking and biking, for just tying our city together. And I think this bridge is really saving our mall through this difficult time with retail, and the additional food shopping we'll have in our city there is really going to make the thousand-plus people that are going to be living right across the tracks so happy to be able to easily go across that bridge and not get in their car, like has been the history of Emeryville. The railroad tracks has just been too intimidating. This really is a solution for our city, for so many people. So I'm pleased that I'm still here in the city and seeing things change for the best.
Thank you, Member Donahue. Anyone else? Okay, well, thank you again, Mr. Anderson and Mr. Sherman, for your report on the BPAC, and we'll move to item 6.3, which is the last presentation from a committee tonight, the Housing Committee's Annual Report. And I believe we will have Cheryl and Valerie.
Great, thank you. Good evening to Mayor Bowders and also the council members, as well as staff members who are here, and any members of the public. I think what we've been talking about tonight has been the quality of life in Emeryville, and housing is definitely a very large part of that. The, you can move on to the next slide. The Housing Committee has, or provides input, I'll just read this because it's important as the overview, provides input and recommendations regarding city policies, priorities, and gives feedback related to the city's housing policies and programs. Next slide? One of the challenging things with the Housing Committee is there are already a lot of programs in place at the state level and locally too, that have very long names and acronyms and are hard to separate out. So I'm just going to mention that part of the actions that we took this year involve the 2020 Housing Element Annual Progress Report, which describes implementation of programs in 2020 and housing production from the beginning of the Regional Housing Needs Allocation Implementation Period, which began on July 1st, 2014. And we examined these, this report, and we recommended to the City Council that the council approve the Annual Progress Report on the Housing Element Progress, and the item was approved by the City Council. We also examined the 2019, 2020 Housing Successor Annual Report, which describes housing assets and activities of the housing successor that occurred in 2019, 2020, and this item was also approved by City Council. Next? We looked at a lot of different things during this last year. We looked at the 2021 Below Market Rate Affordability Table, and made comments on that, and we, the city updates this affordability table on a regular basis, based on State of California Housing and Community Development Department annual releases of Alameda County income limits. And this item was also adopted by the City Council. We looked at a bunch of other things, including some things that were suggested by the committee, such as solar power for residential structures. We spent some time just looking at what's available, what are the programs that are available, what's going on in Emeryville. We looked at a potential loss of a below-market rate homeownership unit, and took, or recommended that the city buy that unit and resell it so that it could still be made available for a below-market rate- so that it could still be made available for a below-market-rate owner, which occurred. And then we also looked at the Housing Bond Guidelines for the Developmental Opportunity Program. And of course, Cycle 6 Housing Element, which has many parts to it. And I won't go over all of those. But each of them received some lively discussion, shall I say. And it was intense discussion at times. So on the next slide, what are the top priorities for the coming year? Some of the same things updated. So let's see. The Housing Successor Annual Report, the Housing Element Cycle 6 Report, and the annual report that I've already described. The new versions, the Developmental Opportunities Guidelines, some below-market rate and first home buyer program guidelines. And the goal of being pro-housing, having a pro-housing designation, and looking at what we can do within the guidelines of the Housing Affordability Table. Next. So for a little background on the Cycle 6 Housing Element, which will be the first priority for the coming year, we will discuss and make recommendations based on the housing constraints and resources and opportunities that we have here in Emeryville and that are mandated by the programs that we are a part of. And we'll review and provide feedback on the draft report. The next priority, which is on the next slide, is commenting on, examining, looking at the Housing Plan Program Guidelines. So again, that's the first-time buyer program, or Development Opportunities Guidelines, and then rental rehab guidelines. Next. That's it. We have a very active, committed committee. And I want to thank all the committee members that took time to be a part of this and to be so engaged. We've had some changes, but the new members are just as committed as the older members were. I want to thank Councilmember Martinez, who was our liaison from the council for part of the year. And we look forward to having Councilwoman Welsh be the liaison going forward. I'd also like to especially thank the staff who do so much work. Good work, really high-quality work. Valerie Bernardo and Chad Smalley. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Now is the time for public comment. A member of the public who wishes to comment on this committee's report will be afforded two minutes to do so. Sherry, did we receive any written comments prior to this meeting?
We did not.
Okay, thank you. We have one hand raised. Recognize Brian Donahue for two minutes of comment.
Okay, now I can finally do it. Can you hear me?
We can. Welcome.
Okay, housing is... Emeryville is schizophrenic on housing. First is we don't have enough, nearly enough, affordable housing. We never meet our arena goals on affordability. However, thanks to Mayor Bouders and his Measure C, the awesome Measure C that we passed several couple of years ago, the people of Emeryville are coming to the rescue. So we're doing what the developers aren't doing, and that is providing affordable housing. So Emeryville is fantastic on affordable housing, at least from that end. The people of Emeryville are really good and shepherded by Councilmember Bouders. So Mr. Bouders is to be thanked for that. But something a little more distressing during the course of the year, since this is a summation year of the year. My family, we live in Emeryville, and we decided to inquire about a BMR unit, perhaps renting a BMR unit. We could not get any help from the city of Emeryville. We made phone calls. This is my wife and my daughter. Phone calls, emails, texts to people at the staff at City Hall, the city manager about can we have some questions answered about the BMR program? The city just patently refused to answer our questions. So we moved over to the Hollow Housing, who was contracted out by the city to manage the Affordable Housing Program. Could not get answers from Hollow Housing. So I finally had to go to the State of California Housing Authority and notify them that we're not getting any assistance from the city of Emeryville or Hollow Housing. And I mentioned in my letter of complaint that it could be because my wife and daughter are Asian. Is this an example of Asian hatred? I don't know. But they are in fact Asian.
That's your time. Thank you very much for your comment.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring this back for discussion. And I'd like to offer the opportunity to speak first to Member Welch, followed by Member Martinez, as the most recent members of committees liaison.
Yes, I just want to give a shout out to Chair Bolton herself. She's a wonderful facilitator of the meetings. She's very sharp and asks great questions. And she's a great leader on the Housing Committee. So I wanted to shout her out as well, as she was giving kudos to everyone else. But what I really appreciate about the Housing Committee is the diversity of the conversation. There's conversations about development, rehabilitation, equity. And so I feel like those conversations, they're a lot meatier than the conversations I've experienced in past housing committees and all of my experience, especially the focus on the housing element, which can sometimes not have the best community engagement from folks who aren't specifically housing-focused. And so I really appreciate the Housing Committee really doing a deep dive to see how we can make our housing element as equitable as possible, especially for households needing low to very low-income housing.
Thank you. Member Martinez, would you like to add anything?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I think that housing is maybe one of the most important things that we work on as a city. Emeryville, for so many of the reasons that were stated tonight, all of the work that's done at our great committees is a wonderful place to live. And I take very seriously the charge of making sure that we are giving other people the opportunity to live in this great city at all income levels, at all ranges, all types of housing, including older generations who deserve to be able to age in place, including younger generations, our children, who we don't want to move out of state necessarily if they wish to reside in the great state of California and the great city of Emeryville. So it's really important work that gets done. And the Housing Committee is where it all begins. So I have a real debt of gratitude to that committee for all of the work that they do.
Thank you. Do others wish to comment?
Okay. I just want to just agree with Members Welch and Martinez and express my gratitude. And my foray into public service in the city of Emeryville was as a member of the Housing Committee myself. So I know what amazing work they do. And I'm grateful to Member Welch for representing us as the council liaison to that committee and for the very productive dialogue we have. We have a very strong foundation as a city in terms of the work we're doing on affordable housing. We have a lot of good things in the works right now. I'm very excited about the projects we have across the city that this council has unanimously supported and approved funding and building to serve people. I think, as Member Martinez mentioned, of all walks of life. And we're really helping everybody from seniors who wish to age in place to people experiencing homelessness, to in the near future, people who are aging out of foster care even, without family supports. So we're really in a small space doing a lot of very good things. And I just want to continue to express my gratitude as well to the Housing Committee. Members, that will conclude the discussion for this agenda. The time is 7:29, Madam Clerk. And I'm adjourning this special meeting of the City Council. And for the members of the public, we'll have a couple of very quick meetings, followed by the City Council meeting. The time is 7:30 PM. I'm calling to order the Management of Emeryville Services Authority meeting. I've already given the admonition related to AB 361. The roll call is not necessary, as all members remain present. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the final agenda.
I move approval of the final agenda.
I second.
Okay, there's a motion made by Member Donahue and seconded by Member Welch to approve this agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouders?
Aye. The agenda has been approved. Are there any ex parte communications that members wish to report? Seeing none, Agenda Item 5 is public comment. Members of the public wish to comment for an item not on the agenda tonight or the Mesa meeting can do so now. I will award one minute of time for this meeting. Recognize Brian Donahue for public comment for one minute, Madam Clerk.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Donahue.
Okay, so since I wasn't able to complete what I was saying before, I'm letting you know, and the only ones who'll hear this will be you. The city of Emeryville refused to answer my family's questions about the Affordable Housing Program, the BMR Program in Emeryville. So we had to go to the State of California Housing Authority, who... And then I found out from the CEO of Hollow Housing that I asked her, she apologized for not having contacted me. And I said, why didn't you do it? And she said she was told not to contact me or my family in any way, answer calls or emails. She was told that by the city manager of the city of Emeryville to not answer my family's questions about getting a BMR unit in Emeryville. So that's unethical and immoral, certainly, probably also illegal. We should not be acing people out. I mean, we need to... All people have to have fair and equitable...
That's your time. Thank you. Your time is up. That's the public comment. Any members of the public who wish to comment who have not been spoken, have not had a chance yet? Okay? Seeing none, we'll move to the consent calendar for this meeting. Does any member wish to pull an item? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion on the consent calendar.
I move the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Motion by Member Donahue, seconded by Vice Mayor Medina to approve the calendars. Consent items, please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouders?
Aye. The consent calendar has been approved. Item 7.1 is a resolution making the findings necessary to continue remotely-held meetings for the Mesa Board pursuant to AB 361. Members, are there any items to discuss? Okay, at this time, I'll call for public comment on the action item related to Mesa. Seeing no public comment, that's closed. Is there a motion?
I move 7.1.
Second.
Motion by Member Donahue, seconded by Member Welch to approve this resolution. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouders?
Aye. That item being approved. The time is 7:33, Madam Clerk. And I adjourn this meeting. The time is 7:33. I call to order the city of Emeryville as the successor agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency. Please note that we are participating in this meeting via teleconference pursuant to the provisions of Assembly Bill 361, and that all members remain present. At this time, I'll take a motion to approve the final agenda.
I move? Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Medina, seconded by Member Welch to approve this agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouders?
Aye. The agenda being approved. Are there any ex parte communications? Seeing no ex parte communications, now is the time for public comment. Members of the public wish to comment for an item on this agenda or not on this agenda will be afforded one minute to do so. Seeing no public comment, public comment being closed. We'll move now to the consent calendar. Members, are there any questions? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
I move the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion by Member Donahue, seconded by Member Welch to approve the consent calendar. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouders?
Aye. The consent calendar has been approved. Item 7.1 is a resolution pursuant to Assembly Bill 361 making the findings necessary to continue remote meetings. Some public comment for the action item. Seeing none, members, is there a motion?
I move 7.1.
Second.
Motion by Member Donahue, seconded by Vice Mayor Medina to approve this resolution. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouders?
Aye. The resolution being approved. The time is 7:35, Madam Clerk. And I adjourn this meeting. The time is 7:35. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the city of Emeryville's regular City Council meeting. Please note that we're participating in this meeting pursuant to the provisions of Assembly Bill 361, which I've announced earlier in tonight's meetings, and that all members remain present. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve this final agenda.
I move approval of the final agenda.
Second.
Please call the roll. Member Donahue has motioned, and Member Welch has seconded.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouders?
Aye. The agenda has been approved. We move to special orders of the day. We have one special order today, which is a visit from Dorian O'Brien, the Vice Counsel General from the nation of Ireland. And good evening, Vice Counsel. How are you?
I'm good, thanks. Can you hear me, Mayor?
Oh, I can hear you and all of the Gaelic spirit that I was hoping to get this evening. Welcome to Emeryville. And I wanted to afford you the wonderful opportunity to address the City Council and the members of the public gathered here today.
Thank you so much. And it's an absolute great honor to be here. So thanks for having me. It's a particular honor this month, as you probably all know. It's kind of St. Patrick's Day season. So we're marking Ireland's National Day and Irish-American Heritage Month. So this time of year is, as you could probably guess and as we're going to see, a very important one for us Irish, the Irish diaspora, and really anyone affiliated with Ireland. And 2022 is an important year for us. There are some important anniversaries in Irish political and cultural history. It's the centenary of the formation of Ireland's first independent state. And it's also 100 years since the publication of James Joyce's Ulysses. So two different celebrations, but both very important. I just want to say one thing before I talk about St. Patrick's Day. It's very important just for me to acknowledge that obviously this St. Patrick's Day, we are celebrating, you know, the heritage day against the backdrop of a war in Europe. So I just want to take this opportunity to declare Ireland's solidarity with Ukraine and also to acknowledge the resilience and courage of their people. Democratic and humanitarian values are essential to our Irish identity. And I'm very proud to say that Ireland has provided tangible support through the European Union bilaterally and in lifting the visa requirements for those entering from Ukraine. On a more positive note, obviously, this St. Patrick's Day also coincides with the lifting, or the gradual lifting, really, of public health restrictions as a threat posed by the pandemic received. And many people last weekend and throughout the week will celebrate St. Patrick's Day in person. So, you know, that we can do so in a safe manner really is a great success. But this St. Patrick's Day, we're celebrating three things. First of all, the Irish community in California. There are over 2 million people who claim Irish descent. And I believe, Mayor Bouders, maybe you might have some in there I've heard. And I can also see some Irish names on the symposium. So that's amazing, amazing to hear that there's so many out here. And we also remember the shared history and heritage between Ireland and California. I mean, really, there's arguably nowhere in the world where Ireland has, you know, made a more formative impact than the Golden State. Through an accident of history, really, you know, one of our darkest times, the potato famine coincided with the gold rush in California. So there was a huge amount of immigration then. And Irish came here in their droves. And they really have thrived here, I think, while always nurturing that connection to Ireland. And there really have been many influential Irish and Irish-Americans in the state who played an instrumental role here, which we're very proud of. And finally, we celebrate the dynamic and vibrant contemporary links between Ireland and California, which really have demonstrated enormous resilience over the last two years. I think that today, over 450,000 people in Ireland are employed in companies headquartered in the US West Coast. And around 30,000 Californians are employed in Irish-owned companies here. In 2019, we had a quarter million Californians visit Ireland. I'm not sure if anyone is on the call now, but it's a huge number. Ireland. I'm not sure if anyone is on the call now, but it's a huge number, and almost 60,000 Irish came to California, you know, which is a really vibrant exchange of people. And post-pandemic is something we really want to see return quickly. And we're delighted that the direct flight between Dublin in Ireland and San Francisco has returned. That's great to see. We're not resting on our laurels, however, and we don't take this relationship for granted. And over the past two years, the Irish government has really demonstrated our commitment to California. We've opened a new consulate general in L.A., we've opened a new screen sector office, we've opened a new Tourism Ireland office here in San Francisco, and we've also appointed a cultural attaché for the West Coast. And ourselves in San Francisco, we've just moved into a brand-new landmark office, integrating our diplomatic, trade, and tourism agencies, which is really deepening our footprint of California and getting ready for the next stage of our special relationship. So we know we can really kind of continue to build on those linkages, which, as I say, go back, you know, so far from the ancient 40s, really. And we will continue to do more and more in California. And engagements like this at every level are really important for strengthening the relationship. So on that note, I just want to say thank you so much again for having me here to speak today. Gurb Maghut, and thank you all, and happy St. Patrick's Day season to you all.
Thank you, Vice Counsel. I'd like to afford members of the city council who'd like to say any remarks in response to our guest, wish anything to her, may do so. Anybody? I will. So as was adequately noted, I am fully three-quarters Irish. My family, Bouters is a last name, which is actually Belgian Flemish, but my other family surnames are Kelly Moran and O'Reilly. And my family hails from Counties Mayo and Roscommon in Ireland, and I'm hoping to hike and climb Mount Aragall this week, this week, that would be great if it was this week, this year at some point. And I'm looking forward to utilizing that direct trip between San Francisco and Dublin to get to Ireland quickly. And I understand you went to a different Dublin this evening. How was that?
Virtually, virtually. I had to keep reminding myself, I was not in the Dublin where I've lived for so long. But it's wonderful, it's amazing. I mean, really, the connections, I mean, they just continue to astound me. And I'm delighted, Mayor, that we can claim you as our own. And I would definitely encourage you to get out there. That direct flight is five days a week, and Ireland definitely won't disappoint. So I would really recommend to do that. Delighted you all still have some heritage.
Yeah, I've enjoyed my time in Galway and the Aran Islands. I've been to Ireland many times with my grandparents, so I look forward to going back on my own. So I don't need to leave you with an Irish blessing, so sláinte to you. And I would say to my colleagues who may not be of Irish heritage, because I feel empowered tonight as the mayor, I proclaim you all Irish for a day, so that you can participate in the spirit of the Irish culture, growing up with Irish grandparents. It is a very inclusive and welcoming space, and there's much joy in the Irish culture, and so I wish that joy for all of you in your hearts this week. And Vice Counsel, I appreciate you being here, and I wish you a lovely evening, and I hope that we will have the opportunity to see you in person sometime.
Absolutely. Thanks so much, and lovely evening to you all, too. Thanks again.
All right, cheers. I will allow public comment for this item for one minute. Sherry, please recognize Brian Donahue.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to say to the speaker, thank you for your presentation. I was quite impressed that you're visiting Emeryville, kind of surprised. And Brian O'Donoghue is an am down.
That's the end of your public comment, Mr. Donahue.
Guess so.
All right. Okay, is there anything else that people wish to mention about our special order of the day? I hope everybody here and at home has a wonderful St. Patrick's Day. And I could give a lot of Irish blessings. Some of them are a little more cheeky than others, but I will maybe save that for those who stay till the very end of the meeting. All right, moving on with our agenda, we're on Agenda 5, announcements from committee and commission vacancies. Madam Clerk?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I will again announce our public notice of vacancies has been published and amended to add an additional vacancy that occurred as a result of a resignation from our Commission on Aging. So we have one business representative on budget advisory, two openings on Commission on Aging, one nonprofit workforce development rep for Economic Development Advisory Committee, one community member for Housing Committee, and one business rep or resident for the Public Art Committee. The applications are due to the city by April 4, and the appointments are to be made at a special council meeting on Tuesday, May 3. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Members, any comments on the committee vacancies? Seeing none, we'll go to Item 6, council member special announcements or reports on meetings attended. Is there anybody who wishes to provide a special report or update? I have, oh, Member Donahue, go ahead.
I just want to acknowledge that we all received an actual letter from Gillian Belcher about her concerns at 51 Emery Bay Drive for a noise and air quality issue there. But she expanded her concern for just, will the city be able to continue doing our mixed zoning effectively and controlling excess noise? And I just wanted to say that we do have a real noise ordinance that I think can address some of the issues that she raised. And I think that our city really has pride in its livability by being mixed use. And I think we've had, you know, a history since I've been here of learning how to do that. We will continue, and our noise ordinance offers guidance going forward, is all I wanted to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Do others have reports on committees or meetings attended? I have one, which is that yesterday, the Alameda County Transportation Commission's Policy Planning and Legislation Committee unanimously approved the conceptual design for the San Pablo Avenue Corridor Plan. There was a number, over 60 comments were received, both for and against. I want to recognize Vice Mayor Medina for being among those who commented in support of the program. And the cities of Berkeley, Emeryville, and AC Transit were all on the committee, as well as Oakland, and all voted in favor of moving forward with the next phase of this, which is to develop a more refined design for us to submit to Caltrans to potentially redesign the right-of-way to be a more multimodal corridor. I just want to recognize the Vice Mayor for her work and leadership at the city on that project in particular. Any other comments on meetings attended? Okay, seeing none. That will move us to the city manager's report. Madam City Manager, do you have anything to report?
Nothing this evening, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Members, do you have ex parte communications for any of the items on the agenda? I will call on each of you. Member Welch, do you have any ex parte communications to report?
No, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Member Martinez, do you have any items to report?
I don't, thank you.
Okay. Member Donahue?
Well, I got an email from Don Greystock, part of the Fox Water Group owning a property on San Pablo, about this upcoming issue.
For Item 12.1?
Yes, for 12.1.
Okay. Vice Mayor Medina?
Yeah, I received that letter as well.
Okay, is it fair to say Members Martinez and Welch, you also received that letter? See, Member Martinez said yes. Member Welch said yes. I also received the same letter that Mr. Donahue has referenced for us. I have nothing to report other than what has been stated. So we will move beyond ex parte communications. And now is the time for public comment. Members of the public who wish to comment for an item not on the agenda, at this meeting are afforded three minutes to do so. Any members of the public who wish to comment for an item not on this agenda? We have one hand raised. Madam Clerk, please recognize Brian Donahue. Go ahead.
Yeah, I sent a letter to the five of you this week about an item on an agenda at this meeting, and none of you just mentioned it in your ex parte communications requirements. I'm kind of wondering why you didn't mention it. I mean, we're supposed to be about accountability here. I sent it to the five council members. Now for my comment. There's an agenda item about, there's going to be a noise ordinance waiver request later tonight. As a sideline to that, your city staff member, Charlie Bryant, did not let you know in the staff report for that later tonight, that the applicant, Bayview Emeryville LLC and JS Builders LLC, violated our noise ordinance when they were stopped, when they had their entire work crew working on a Saturday illegally, when they were stopped by, they were shut down by the Emeryville Police Department some weeks ago. Why would our, Charlie Bryant, the head of the Community Development Department, why wouldn't he let the five of you, the decision-makers, know about this violation from this developer now seeking a noise ordinance waiver? That lets you know that they're not operating in good faith. Okay, so that's material to what you need to know to make an objective decision tonight about the noise ordinance waiver. But the question is, why would your staff member not let you know that? It's not anywhere in the staff report from Charlie Bryant to you. I'm telling you, it happened. The Emeryville Police Department shut down this development, this developer for working illegally on a Saturday, and I'm just shocked that the city staff did not let you know about this in their staff report tonight. So I'm letting you know, and I think you should get to the bottom of why didn't the staff, you need to know this. Why didn't the staff let you know this? You can't make a good, objective decision about this noise ordinance waiver without all the facts. And you need to know about, is this applicant operating in good faith in Emeryville? And the staff, by keeping you in the dark, is making it so you can't answer that question. You can't give a good, objective decision tonight. And so I'm letting you know, and I wish it wasn't up to me to have to let you know. Why, I mean, why should it be citizens letting you know this? Why shouldn't it be the staff? So again, ex parte communication, you didn't do your diligence on that just now. And then this Charlie Bryant question, if you could talk about this, it would be good for the people to hear. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we dismiss him, can I just ask you which item you're referring to that you sent an email on?
On the noise ordinance waiver request tonight. I don't have the agenda in front of me, it's 12 whatever.
It's 11.1. So you're stating that you sent an email to all of us about the Nady Site in particular?
Yes, I did.
Okay, I don't think any of us received it. Everyone is shaking their head no, so I would just-
So what do we do about this?
You can resend it to the city council and the-
No, but what do we do about the breakdown?
Okay, so let's remove him from public comment, please.
Thank you.
This is not a discussion. So if you have submitted an email to us, and we have told you that we have not received it, I recommend you resubmit it either to all members of the city council, which I know you're very good at, because we receive many emails from you, or you may submit it to the city clerk in the manner that is provided for on the city's website. And if we receive those comments, they will be included in the record for this meeting. And in a future meeting, I would be happy to acknowledge that I have received an ex parte communication from you about that. I apologize if you did send an email about that. I have, it was not tied to an agenda item perhaps, and so maybe I did not recognize that it was a comment related to this item specifically. But I appreciate you raising that, and I will duly note it when we get to that agenda item. Okay. Is there any other member of the public who wishes to make a comment at this time? Okay, seeing none, we will move on from public comment to the consent calendar. Members, is there any item that wishes to be discussed or removed? Seeing none, would anyone like to make a motion for the consent calendar?
I move the consent calendar.
I will second then.
Okay, there's a motion by Member Donahue and a second by Vice Mayor Medina to approve the consent calendar. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouters.
Aye. The consent calendar has been approved. Item 11.1 is our public hearing for the day. It is a resolution of the city council of the city of Emeryville granting a waiver from the noise ordinance to JS Builders LLC for Saturday work on March 19, March 26, and April 2, 2022, from 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. at 6701 Shellmount Street, which is formerly known as the Nady Site and is now going to be called Bayview Apartments, and designating conditions of approval to do the same. And who will be our presenter this evening? Mr. Bryant? Maru?
Yes, it's me. Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Mayor Bouters and council members. I'm Mira Desai, Senior Planner, and this is a request to do Saturday work at the Bayview Apartments at 6701 Shellmount Street. Next slide, please. As we know, that this site is on the north end of a town, and JS Builders is the general contractor for the 186-unit apartment building that is under construction at the site. The entitlements were obtained in 2016, and after remediation of the site, a building permit was issued on May 28 of last year. Next slide, please. So the request is for three Saturdays, starting this Saturday, March 26, and April 2, and the work from 8 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. The kind of work is to do rough framing and sprinkler work on the fifth and sixth floors. The tools that will be used are air compressors, hammers, and power source. About 25 to 30 employees will be present. Next slide, please. The reason for the request is to make up for the loss of time due to COVID outbreaks and the quarantine requirements that the workers need to follow per county guidelines. Next slide, please. In terms of notification, mail notification to property owners and site addresses within 300 feet were sent, as well as legal advertisement in the Oakland Tribune. Next slide, please. In terms of whether to approve or not to approve, given that the site is over 600 feet from the nearest residential developments, and the key ones are Bridgewater Artistry and Courtyards, and that the pandemic-induced delays that could not be foreseen, staff believes that the request for Saturday work may be granted, especially if notification of the proposed request does not solicit objections and or comments this evening. Next slide, please. So that concludes my presentation, and we are recommending at this point approval for the project as outlined in the resolution. If there are any questions of me, I'm happy to answer. The applicant does not have a presentation, but Carol Schwartz is available for questions in the audience.
Okay, thank you, Maru. First, we'll just entertain questions. Can we please promote Carol to the panel, so if members have questions for the applicant, they can be addressed by the applicant themselves. Members, when you have questions, if you'd please just identify whether you're asking the planning staff or the applicant. Vice Mayor Medina, you're recognized.
I'm asking, planning staff, was work shut down here on a Saturday for violation of our noise ordinance?
So this is what happened. We received an email from Mr. Donahue on March 4. That is after my staff report for this item is done. So that is one of the reasons why that was not included in the staff report. I followed up with Carol Schwartz as to what happened on Saturday, January 22. There was, there were people at the site, and she indicated that this was due to some emergency circumstances. The winds on that particular day were between 20 to 25 miles per hour, and the lumber on site needed to be secured. At some point, the police were called, and I verified this from Chief Jennings, who verified that Sergeant Shepherd from the Emeryville PD came to the site. She listened for noise and spoke to the superintendent, and she said that everybody needs to go home. And that's when it stopped, and she left the site. That is what I know of the situation as they developed on Saturday, January 22.
Thank you for providing that information. Can you please comment on whether or not it's possible for you to have updated the city council about those facts prior to this staff presentation?
Is it possible?
Yeah.
I suppose yes. Yes, it is possible. In the past, we have done late items. That is correct.
Thank you.
Do other members have questions for the staff or the applicant? I have one question for the applicant. Ms. Schwartz, is it your intent that you would just need three days to make up for essentially the entire pandemic and the COVID impacts? Or is this only a request for three days now, and do you anticipate making a request of this nature in the future for the same reason?
We're asking for three days. It won't make up for all the time that we've lost, but at this point, we really want to get a jump to make sure with the work on the quiet zone that's going to commence in a few months, that we make substantial progress before then because of the coordination.
Thank you. That was my only question. Other members have questions? Okay, now is the opportunity for the public comment. The public hearing is open at 7:59 p.m. Public hearing is now open. Members of the public who wish to comment on this item will be afforded three minutes to speak so as it is a public hearing. Sherry, do we receive any written comments for the public hearing prior to this meeting?
We did not.
Okay. I would recognize Brian Donahue for the public hearing. You have three minutes.
Okay, you did receive my comments. I sent it to Sherry and to the five of you, and it's not included as late correspondence by Maru. It's just a blackout. And it makes me wonder, is it because they're my comments, and I've been critical of the city in the past? And, or is it, what's going on here? Didn't make it into late correspondence, didn't, Sherry just mentioned that she received nothing. I've sent a letter to the five of you- I, I've sent a letter to the five of you, and I'm gonna, I'll prove it later. But why the breakdown? This is very disconcerting to me. Why not a late correspondence? I sent it to Sheri, and I'll prove it, and we, we need to get to the bottom of this. We have to do better at transparency in Emeryville for this. Okay, now moving forward with the issue. You just got lied to. Uh, I don't believe that Maru lied to you. I believe Maru told, told you what she was told, and that was that it was windy. The applicant said it was windy that day, and they needed to secure the lumber. I witnessed it. I witnessed what they were doing, because I was the one that called the police. They were not securing lumber, they're doing the, actually the opposite. I'm in the business, I know what construction is. They were raising walls. The opposite of securing, they were raising. Raising wooden walls and putting them in place on the parking structure, that the cast concrete parking structure that they had cast previously. So they were raising walls, not securing. We just got lied to. Uh, do we let the lies stand and let them profit by lying? I, that's unseemly to me. I don't think we should reward lying. And then on top of it, they were caught working illegally. They didn't seek permission. We should not reward them now with this noise ordinance waiver. Further, what is the, what is the, putatively the noise ordinance waiver for? They, they just told you it's because of COVID. Every single developer and every single builder in the state of California has been affected by COVID. This developers and this builders competitors in the marketplace have, are, were also affected by COVID. This is merely trying to seek a leg up and profit maximizing, you know, and increase their profits. It's an equal playing field, it's a level playing field. COVID leveled the playing field for everybody. So now to seek now to, to use COVID as an excuse is not good enough to give away our quiet, peace and quiet on our weekends. We just heard councilmember Donahue touting about how we have this wonderful noise ordinance. But the problem is waivers are constantly being granted by the, by the council for bogus reasons. Or just no reason, no, no reasons at all sometimes. So COVID is the great equalizer. It's, it, their competitors have to, had to deal with COVID. This is just merely a way for them to increase their profits. I say that's not good enough. Fur- further, when I called the police, I stayed on site until Michelle Shepherd, uh, of the Emeryville Police Department arrived there.
That was three minutes.
But before she arrived there, I was bodily, I was threatened with bodily injury by, uh, one of the, the, the managers or the, the person at the site representing the, uh, JNS Builders. I was actually threatened, it was actually a crime was committed. It's illegal to threaten people with bodily injury, with, with, um, with, uh, with, threaten people with battery, and that's what happened. I was threatened. So these are not good actors. These are not, these are not, uh, you know, they're not, uh, they're not, you know, on the up and up. And now they're asking for a noise ordinance after they just lied to you and said that they're securing their, it was an entire crew of people, a whole ginormous crew, tens and tens of workers, I don't know how many, but a huge crew. And you can ask the Emeryville Police Department, Michelle Shepherd, how many workers there were, and she will, uh, she will tell you, yeah, it's, um, tens of workers, I didn't count them. So are we gonna let a lie be rewarded now with a noise ordinance waiver? I, 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 I really hope we don't do that here tonight. Thank you very much. Please operate in the, in the community's interest.
Thank you. Are any of the members of the public wish to speak at the public hearing? Okay, seeing none, the time is 8:04. I've closed the public hearing, and I will return to the council for discussion and deliberation. Would anyone like to begin on the discussion? Vice Mayor Medina?
Yeah, uh, to be honest here, I don't think getting a jump on it is adequate reason to grant a noise waiver. Um, I do not appreciate it when developers violate our noise ordinance and then seek waivers. I have, uh, moved for denial of one in the past, I believe, for Sharon Williams Development. So to be ideologically consistent in application here, I'm gonna move to deny this one.
That's a motion you're making?
That's a motion I'm making, and I would have a second motion to give staff direction in all future noise wait for requests to include any violations of our noise ordinance, um, within the staff report and consult with the police department prior to make sure those are adequately enumerated.
I just want to be, um, conscientious of one factual situation. I live next door, and I'm recused from the Lennar project. But Lennar did contact me on January 20th of 2022 about actually having to tie down issues on January 22nd, tie down property and other things because of a significant windstorm that was in the forecast for Saturday, January 22nd. And I, um, I recall having a conversation with them about it because I represent the resident group, um, in the neighborhood in my public capacity and not as an elected official about that particular date. Uh, so I just want to just say that if there's a question about, um, why people were on site, while there may have been other activities, we've heard that from the members of the public, um, I just want to say that that is, that the claim that that was why people were there is consistent with what I heard as a resident who received proactive comment, uh, a- and inquiry. I will, I will say to the applicant that the fact that Lennar did reach out to other people to seek that input or, um, support for doing anything on Saturday, that that was in the forecast and they knew on Thursday, um, would be a best practice for all developers, was that if that was a predictable event and you felt there might be a need to do that, um, I think contacting City Hall to request, uh, support for that, because the planning director does have some authority to grant an emergency exemption to the noise ordinance for such a circumstance, um, would be the most prudent way of protecting yourself from the public criticism that you have been willfully or neglecting, neglecting, um, the, the rules we have in place to ensure that there's not a violation of the livability that the residents enjoy on the weekend. I wasn't prepared to completely deny it this evening. I, I did feel there should be some offset. I do believe if developers violate, um, construction rules and regulations that are related to the livability, residents expect that there should be some offset for future asks. Um, so I wasn't prepared myself to make a complete denial. But there is a motion on the table from the vice mayor to deny the entire application, and I would invite the three members of the council who have not spoken, if you would like to weigh in or provide your feedback. I would welcome that at this time. Uh, member Welch, you're recognized.
Um, as the, a member of the Public Safety Committee, I'm a little concerned because I do not recall this being brought up at all in our meeting as well from the police department. So that's also concerning. I feel like that's something that should have been at least brought to, uh, member Donahue and I's attention, um, since that is where we're supposed to be advising the council. So I have some additional concerns, and it's feeling as if this application is a, um, cover-up is too strong of a word, but it's, oh, well, we got in trouble last time, so now let's try to move forward with doing it the right way. So it's, it's a little concerning to me, and I understand that the weather was a, a big issue. And obviously, the location is right near the water, and it gets considerably very windy next, the closer you are, um, to, to the water. So I understand that concern, but as you pointed out, Mayor Bowers, there were some, um, some earlier, um, precautions that could have been made. So, um, I'm, I'm, I'm feeling, I'm feeling conflicted, but there just, uh, there has just been a, a breakdown, and it does feel, um, at, at best, it was just careless. So, um, I, I will second, um, Vice Mayor Medina's motion to deny.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Member Donahue, you're recognized.
Uh, 600 feet for the closest Emeryville resident is pretty far away. Yeah, there could be some other people staying near there, uh, at the Ashby exit. Uh, the, the overall, uh, you know, I, I don't know, but the, I'm thinking that we should give them half of the, what they're asking for, something like that. Got to penalize them in some way, but, uh, you know, if, if they were there tying stuff down, uh, you know, that's, you know, that's, that's a legitimate reason, that's for sure. And we just have their, their word and, uh, Brian Donahue's word. And, uh, the, the police did not include any mention of this that I saw. So, uh, but, you know, maybe they just don't think it's a serious thing. They're, you know, I'm not sure what to say. So I, I guess I would feel like let's, let's give them half of the times they're asking.
And member Martinez, do you wish to weigh in or comment? You have no obligation to do so.
No, I'll, I'll give some comments. I, I actually remember very well the windstorms that happened, because I was awake in at 3:00 AM one morning when my doormat jumped off my porch and rang the doorbell. And, um, it was, I have it on, uh, video, it's very weird. But, um, it was quite windy. However, as the mayor pointed out, there are avenues, um, by which the developer could have gone through, um, certain, certain routes to ensure that the work that they were doing was not, um, counter to our noise ordinance. And, um, and this is not a statement on this developer in particular, but I, I, um, I think, you know, um, at times, the city's been taken advantage of in terms of developers working when they shouldn't be. And I, you know, I'm, I'm considering, um, the motion and the, um, second and, and making a statement tonight because I, I feel like we might need to, you know, just enforce our noise ordinance. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Member Martinez, does anyone else wish to make a comment after hearing each other? Are there any other motions? Member Welch?
I just had a follow-up question for member Donahue. When you said half the time, did you mean just half the, half the amount of days they're requesting?
Yes.
Member Welch, you have any further discussion? No? Okay, seeing no, um, additional motions. Uh, there was a motion by Vice Mayor Medina and a second by member Welch to deny this, uh, application. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Yes, aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers?
I will explain my vote. Um, I believe that this is a circumstance where on a first violation in a request, we should, um, we should work with the applicant and deny some of the requested time and grant some of the requested time. And this has been an item that we have struggled with in the city for a long time, um, because developers, for the reasons member Martinez noted, have taken advantage of this in the past and have been violators. Um, and I, I don't have any disagreement with my colleagues for taking the position they have. But for this specific fact, fact pattern, I'm gonna vote no. So the motion passes, the application is denied, and that concludes the public hearing. We will move to item 12.1. Item 12.1 is a letter of support, update and review of the Alameda CTC San Pablo Avenue Multimodal Improvement Project. And I believe we will welcome, um-
I've got quite a list, actually, of folks that have asked, so, uh, give me one second, and I will get them all brought up.
Okay.
Starting with Amber.
I believe tonight you'll be hearing from Tess Lingel for, uh, the introduction to the item, and then Carol Clevinger for the presentation tonight.
Okay, um, is Colin Dental Post also speaking tonight?
Um, he'll be available for questions, as am I in public work stuff.
Okay, thank you. And is there, Amber, is there a slideshow presentation for this item?
Yes, there is. It's being pulled up.
Great, so, uh, hi Tess, how are you?
Hi, good evening, Mayor. Nice to see you.
Nice to, nice to see your name in a little box with a green square. Um, so this is the Executive Director of the Alameda County Transportation Commission, Tess Lingel, and I'll let her introduce herself and herself.
Thank you, Mayor Bowers and members of the council. I want to thank you very much for having us on your agenda this evening. We are very pleased to be here with you to provide you with an information on, uh, progress, an update for the San Pablo project. As you know, this, uh, San Pablo corridor is a very important corridor in the county. It's a high priority for the Alameda County Transportation Commission and one we've been working on since 27, 2017, excuse me. And I'd like to thank you, Mayor Bowers, in your multiple capacities, including as Chair of the Alameda County Transportation Commission, um, Vice Mayor Medina, uh, for your work on this project, um, City Manager Christine Daniel, and the city of Emeryville staff for working very closely with us over the years on critical technical aspects and also direct community and business engagement. Um, this quarter has great opportunities for safety improvements, transit reliability improvements, and it is a quarter where a lot of planned growth is anticipated to happen. Um, we also know how important the 40th Street corridor is and the intersection with San Pablo. Um, and so we look forward to working closely with, with you, uh, on addressing the critical needs at that particular intersection. Uh, tonight's presentation will share with you progress on the recent work, our next steps, and we're also gonna be sharing with you tonight both challenges and opportunities as we move forward into the next steps. We, uh, are pleased to be moving forward with approval on a concept as we are looking to apply to many funding opportunities, uh, at the state, regional, and federal levels to support the implementation of this project. So I'd like to turn it over to, um, Carolyn Clevinger, our Deputy Executive Director of Planning and Policy, and she will give this presentation.
Thank you, Tess, and good evening, council members. Um, as Tess noted, we're very pleased to be giving you this update. I did just want to note that in advance of this item today, we presented to the Transportation Committee in November, as well as the Emeryville PAC last month, and both committees were very supportive of the project. Next slide, please. The San Pablo Avenue Corridor is a high priority corridor for Alameda CTC, AC Transit, and all the cities along its length. It's one of AC Transit's highest ridership corridors, yet due to congestion, buses are often slow and unreliable. It's also in the countywide high injury network and has the high, third highest incidence of collisions in all of Alameda County. The entirety of San Pablo Avenue is identified as a priority development area, with development activity occurring today, and it's also home to several equity priority communities. Given the critical nature of this corridor from a transportation and land use standpoint, Alameda CTC embarked on long-range planning for the corridor, as Tess mentioned, in 2017 in partnership with Contraposta County, AC Transit, Caltrans, and the seven cities, including Emeryville. During Phase 1, we established the goals shown here for the project focused around safety as a core goal, given the high incidence of collisions on the corridor, improving the comfort and quality for all trips, in particular for transit, which needs to be competitive in order to support anticipated growth in a sustainable way. And we need to be respectful and aware of the diversity of communities throughout the corridor. Next slide. This chart summarizes, um, a significant amount of outreach that was done in 2018 and 2019 and work analyzing and discussing trade-offs between different alternatives for design of the corridor. Um, all of the options that we considered during this first phase of the project entailed trade-offs, and there was not consensus throughout the entire corridor on a concept to move forward as one single long-term vision. This summarizes the results of the final survey we conducted in 2019 at the end of the first phase. And we found the strongest support for major changes along the corridor in the southern two cities of Oakland and Emeryville were only 4% to 6% of people supported existing conditions, and there was strong support for bus lane options in the 78, 78% range, and bike lane options also had about half to two-thirds support from these two cities. Berkeley was a tipping point where there was less consensus, and we saw support for major changes to the street starting to drop off, and support for existing conditions jumping up. But there was a strong desire from Alameda CTC and all of our partner agencies and communities to move something forward quickly to address the needs in the corridor, in particular, the need to support bus operations and to improve safety. Next slide. So this slide summarizes the Phase 2 project we're working to advance right now, and that we'll spend the majority of today, tonight talking about. Um, we're focused on targeted safety enhancements throughout the corridor, which is shown there on the green line, plus a bus and bike lane project in Emeryville and Oakland and into the southern Berkeley, and bus bulbs at rapid stops in San Pablo Avenue and Berkeley and Albany with targeted enhancements to parallel bike routes. Next slide. This illustrates the project being proposed for Emeryville. The project concept is being considered from downtown Oakland to just past Ashby Avenue in Berkeley. The first component of the project is converting the outside travel lane to a dedicated bus-only lane. The second component is converting the curb- The second component is converting the curbside lane to a protected bike lane. And the third component is pedestrian safety enhancement, in particular to improve conditions for people crossing San Pablo, such as high-visibility crosswalks and improved curb ramps. Next slide. This is a map of the area for the bus and the bike lanes, and a key thing to note here is that the corridor north of 580 is owned by Caltrans, shown there in the green dashed on a State Route 123. And this includes the entirety of San Pablo within Emeryville. So working with Caltrans can be a more onerous review and approvals process, which traditionally takes five to seven years at a minimum to develop a project of this magnitude on a Caltrans street. Next slide. So one of the key criteria for us to advance this project in the near term was the desire from all sides to get something implemented quickly pending acquisition of full funding. We've entered into a co-op with Caltrans for a streamlined and faster Caltrans review and approval process. For the design, the basic project concept will be accomplished with paint plus raised concrete bike protection and concrete bus islands with bikes routed behind in order to try to have very minimal changes to the curb or median outside of the bus islands in order to allow this expedited project development process. We know there is a strong desire to avoid mixing zones between different modes, such as bus and bike as much as possible in order to improve safety and to protect transit operations. We are looking at more robust infrastructure treatments, including more instances of sidewalk and median reconstruction, but are just aware of the tension that each of these has trade-offs and introduces additional time, cost and risk to the project. Next slide. So these diagrams show the existing conditions on the left side and the project design on the right. Every bus stop would have a new sidewalk-level concrete boarding island with lighting and amenities. The buses would stop in the bus lane, so would no longer have to weave over to the curb and then back into traffic as they do now. And bikes would go up to sidewalk level behind the bus stop to avoid any mixing between the bus and the bike lane. Next slide. We've been working through initial design details with city and AC Transit staff. None of them have simple solutions, especially while trying to achieve a project that can be implemented in the near term. And we want to be transparent about where things get tight and design choices will become constrained. There's a lot of work to do during the design phase of this project to work through these details, and we just want to give you a sense of some of the key issues. We did present in detail the designs to the Transportation Committee and to VPAC. So intersections are the most constrained locations. Loading is a key issue along the corridor. We know that adding a bike lane would result in all parking and loading needing to occur off-street or on side streets. So targeted loading zones on San Pablo will be needed where loading can't be accommodated elsewhere. ADA is a critical issue. Paratransit vehicles need to access the curb to provide door-to-door service, and doing so would be more challenging where there are curb-protected bike lanes. So we're working with East Bay Paratransit and looking at other examples across the region of how to address this, but it may involve some trade-offs with the bike lane buffer design. Next slide. So this illustrates the typical design where autos will make right turns from the bus lane. This should not degrade bus reliability in most locations because turn volumes and pedestrian volumes along the corridor are medium to low in general. However, in locations with high right turn volumes, we will need vehicles out of the bus lane in order to preserve bus performance. Next slide. So this illustrates that other alternative where we... There's actually only one location that we've identified in Emeryville with the potential need for a shared right car turn lane and bike lane, and that is at Adeline. We'll tackle this complex intersection as we get into the engineering this summer, and we'll seek to maximize safety for all users, in particular for bikes and people walking as the most vulnerable users. To solve intersection conflicts at 40th Street, we do believe that we can prohibit rights turning northbound from San Pablo Avenue onto eastbound 40th Street. Cars can use Adeline to essentially make those same connections. And to maximize bike protection of this intersection to interface with the 40th Street project that Tess mentioned earlier, we plan to keep bike protection in place for southbound right turn onto westbound 40th Street. We have explored other options, but all have pretty major trade-offs. Luckily, in most of Emeryville, we can maintain the typical design and preserve bike protection. Next slide. So moving on to parking and loading, which is one of the most critical design issues that we've been working to solve. Several things we know about loading and parking are shown here. In Emeryville, there are 135 parking spaces on San Pablo Avenue, with most of them, close to 75%, having no meters. There are a few loading zones on San Pablo Avenue, and most trucks today are double parking or blocking the through lane to conduct loading. Loading does occur throughout the day, so there is not a super-strong peak to the loading needs. Overall, parking occupancy is low, but there are some very localized block segments with higher utilization. So the four highest occupancy block faces are the four blocks south of 40th Street, so both sides of San Pablo Avenue between 36th and 40th, where the average occupancy there ranges from about 45% to 75%, with Saturday afternoons being the highest period. The analysis that we've done to date really highlights both opportunities and challenges. The vast majority of parcels either have a front, either front or side street, or have off-street parking available. These are locations where we can work closely with the owners and tenants to see if a workable solution off San Pablo can be found. We know it won't be simple, but given that overall about half of the parking on San Pablo isn't being used today, we think we have an opportunity here to meet the goals of the project by shifting this underutilized space on San Pablo to side streets in order to prioritize safety and better bus service on San Pablo. Next slide. We've conducted significant storefront outreach in partnership with staff from Oakland to Emeryville and Alameda CTC and our consultant team, who's been walking the corridor door-to-door together. This has been a true partnership effort to reach key affected storefronts that would be impacted by the project. We've conducted a survey at all the businesses we could reach, asking about access needs. In Emeryville, we surveyed 21 storefronts, representing just under half of all occupied storefronts. Next slide. This slide summarizes the results specific to Emeryville. We've put our conversations into three categories. So Category A are those businesses that were supportive, where the business does not object to moving, loading and parking. Group B are those that are mixed results, so the business has some concerns around moving, loading and parking. But based on the survey, we do think a workable solution is possible. The Group C are those businesses that are opposed, so businesses that do not agree with the plans to move loading and parking, and we agree that there aren't good side-street options for those businesses. Just over 80% of storefronts are in the A or B category, meaning that with additional work, we do believe a workable solution off of San Pablo is possible. The Group C represents four storefronts in Emeryville. Next slide. So the key findings from our storefront outreach are that almost all parcels appear to the survey team to have loading and parking solutions, but there are still key concerns we'll have to work through with more engagement and we get into the more detailed design phase of the project. So we will work in partnership with the Emeryville staff and the businesses to refine solution details. Next slide. We've worked to establish criteria to help us guide where we'd be designating loading zones. And so based on the analysis and outreach we've done, the criteria we developed for designating a loading zone on San Pablo is that a business would be mid-block commercial parcel with no off-street lot opportunities. In Emeryville, this includes two block faces, so just 12% of the total block faces on San Pablo and Emeryville. It's important to note that loading zone locations will be finalized during the preliminary engineering this summer, and we will look at a number of key factors as detailed here, such as if side-street loading zone might be too far away for a particular business, limitations on side-streets in terms of truck circulation, as well as if off-street lots are inadequate for loading activities, given the size and the types of trucks that are doing loading activities. And then one thing we did here, once we did the business outreach, was concerns around personal safety and security on side-streets. So we'll examine those needs in greater detail. Next slide. We've explored a lot of different design options for targeted parking and loading zones on San Pablo Avenue. The first is introducing a small segment of a shared bus or bike lane, which is shown here in the schematic drawing. If no vehicles are present, bicyclists could continue along the curb. This is not optimal for bikes or for transit, but it does allow us to stay within the near-term project parameters and allows for preserving some left turns. One other benefit of the design is that in the future, if the loading zone was deemed to not be needed, it would allow for restriping the curbside space and extending the bike protection with minimal new resources needed. Next slide. So to summarize the key design issues, bike and bus lanes will provide significant benefits, but will include some mixing zones and potential encroachment onto the bus lane. Hybrid stop spacing will be required to minimize bus and bike mixing. And we will be looking at moving parking and loading off San Pablo Avenue, which we believe is feasible at many locations. And some targeted locations, loading zones will be needed, and we'll continue to work with storefronts to address their concerns. And there's definitely a need to design to address paratransit and ADA access needs. Next slide. This gives you a sense of some of the analysis we've done of the benefits of the project. Although this is early modeling, so we do know we will be doing more detailed modeling as the project design is finalized. But the initial modeling does show significant benefits for bus riders in terms of travel time savings and reliability. The modeling also shows the auto travel time will go up, and there is likely to be some diversion off of San Pablo Avenue. For this analysis, we modeled an option with only one left turn at 40th Street, and it resulted in up to 30% diversion during the peak PM period. So based on that feedback, we're now working on a design with two left turn lanes to reduce this diversion into the neighborhoods. So we'll not have results from that until we do another modeling run later this spring, but we'll continue to do additional analysis of travel time and diversions as we move forward with the next stages of design. Next slide. We have an equity analysis underway, and here are some of the initial demographic and mode use results. Overall, AC Transit riders and corridor residents are diverse and rely on transit, walking and biking more than in other areas of Alameda County. Also, the proposed improvements were developed in response to clear desire from communities for safety and transit improvements, especially for slower traffic speeds along this portion of the corridor. Next slide. For project outreach, we're conducting a range of activities. As noted, we've done a great deal of one-on-one storefront engagement. We're also working with community organizations to set up presentations and partnerships with community-based organizations. We've presented to city, AC Transit and East Bay Paratransit Advisory Committees, and we also established an active transportation working group specifically for this project. We are scoped to do more additional robust outreach during the design process over the course of the summer and fall. Next slide. So we're at a key milestone for the project and are seeking support from partner jurisdictions to confirm support for a bus and bike lane concept for San Pablo. We're starting to hear the consensus on this concept this spring in order to enable Alameda CTC to submit funding requests at applications this summer. Over the course of this year, Caltrans review will be a major work element, as well as continuing to work through the details regarding implications for AC Transit service of loading zones and bus-bike interactions and evaluating all the different alternatives we can look at to provide as safe and high-functioning facility as possible. Upon receipt of approvals, Alameda CTC will advance into the preliminary engineering and will submit applications to acquire construction funding for the project as there are numerous anticipated multi-year funding cycles in 2022, for which we believe this project could be highly competitive. Next slide. So this is, again, the slide you saw earlier today of the project concept. This illustrates the project in Emeryville, and again, is being considered from downtown Oakland to just past Ashby Avenue in Berkeley, with the first component being converting that outside travel lane to dedicated bus-only lane, converting the curbside lane to protected bike lane, and then providing pedestrian safety enhancements throughout the corridor. And with that, I'll turn it back to Emeryville staff.
Thank you, staff. Do we have any staff presentation to supplement this, or are we ready for me to move on?
Ready to move on.
Okay, thank you, Amber. Members, do you have clarifying questions for the staff from the Alameda County Transportation Commission or from our planning and work staff? Member Martinez?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I'm excited to get more information on this project. Shortly after I got on council, I was made aware of the I-80 smart corridor project. And I remember when it launched, it touted being able to give real-time traffic information to drivers so they could make better choices about being on the freeway. And maybe it wasn't said explicitly, but it was implied that people would be getting off the freeway and using surface streets to get to their destinations, or at least avoid pockets of traffic. And so I'm just wondering how this really great planning project works together with the intention and then whatever's happening with the I-80 smart corridor program.
Excellent question. Tess, who would be the best person on your staff to answer that question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can address that question, and thank you, Councilmember Martinez. Yes, the I-80 ICM, or Integrated Corridor Mobility Project, was implemented to help to manage traffic along I-80, which has consistently been one of the top-ranked worst congested corridors in the entire Bay Area. What is included in that corridor project is if there is an incident where the freeway is completely blocked, there is traffic information that will be provided to people that they could come off the freeway, go a segment on San Pablo, and then be rerouted back onto the freeway outside of that particular incident which closes the freeway. So it's not intended for people to jump off I-80 just for convenience. It's only when there are major incidences. And so this is, as Carolyn had mentioned, a large portion of San Pablo Avenue is on state right-of-way. And so we'll be working with Caltrans very closely on this project, and we'll have to address that interaction as part of the development of this project. But we don't see that it would hinder this project.
Very good. Thank you for that clarification.
Member Donahue?
I know the 72 and the 72R are part of San Pablo. Are there other bus lines that used to go on San Pablo that may go on again in the near future, other than those two lines?
Councilmember, I am aware, this is Tess Lingel again, I'm aware that there's also the 72M, which traverses San Pablo Avenue. As far as other transit lines that would go on San Pablo, I'm not aware of any others that would resume along this corridor.
If I may, this is Carolyn Clevinger again from Alameda CTC. The only piece I would add is that some of the transbay buses do traverse portions of San Pablo for short segments as they're accessing the freeway. But we don't know of any new routes that are being proposed for the corridor.
Thank you.
Others have questions? Okay, thank you, staff, for being available for questions. We'll leave you here for just the time being. And now is the time for public comment. Members of the public who wish to comment for this item will be afforded the opportunity to do so. I understand that we have one written comment card, but I see that person in the audience with their hand raised. Can we please promote Mr. Rush? Mr. Rush, I'll afford you three minutes to speak unless you would like to have the clerk read the comment you submit in writing. Mr. Rush?
Hello?
Hello, would you like to take three minutes to give comment?
I would. Can you hear me?
We can now. Go ahead, sir.
Well, what disturbs me is that they're saying that the bus lines would be policed and things like that in the future, but presently, there's no policing along San Pablo Avenue. Cars speed, I mean, as much as 60 miles an hour. I used to race cars, and I can tell how fast cars are going. And so the type of danger that they're referring to is just because there's just no policing along that way. And then why is it only in Emeryville and Oakland that we're doing this draconian, no parking and everything like that? It's going to be extremely destructive to businesses. When Amber came and talked to me, I thought it was just some kind of hypothetical discussion of city planning. I had no idea that we were going to be facing a situation like this. And where they got the idea that parking in our area is only 40%, it's like 90% all the time. There's very little parking available. So I would propose something like many more buses and fewer cars, for sure. There was some way to discourage cars from using San Pablo Avenue. I mean, it's a thorough, I mean, it's not a freeway, but it becomes a freeway every day. And so I don't see how this is going to, is going to help add. I mean, I'm sure we're not going to, we would not have parking and we'd have bikes isolated from the street more. But I think cars, cars would be driving awfully fast still. I think it'd be very dangerous myself. And I don't see it as an improvement, just an expense. Anyway, that's my comment.
Any other member of the public wish to comment? Okay, seeing no additional comments, public comment is now closed, and we'll turn to members for discussion. I'd like to recognize the Vice Mayor first, if she would like to go first.
First, I am extremely excited that this project is moving forward and that near-term improvements will be coming to Emeryville. The San Pablo corridor represents a half-mile stretch of our 1.2-spray mile city. And this corridor has, in some years, up to 60% of our collisions between bikes, pedestrians, and vehicles. It is an extraordinarily dangerous corridor for active transit users. It is also not an efficient corridor for bus riders. Any of us who have taken the 72, regular M or R downtown, know that transit slows and makes more unreliable those bus schedules. And so that is a problem for Emeryville residents. That is a problem for commuters. And that disproportionately impacts low-income communities. This is a way to advance our climate change goals, to provide better active transportation options to people in our community, to advance safety goals for active transit users, and also to economically revitalize the San Pablo corridor. Sure, speaking with the choir here on this council, but you are more likely to stop at local shops if you are biking or walking. They might not purchase entire vehicles full, but they do purchase more frequently from local stores, which comes up to an aggregate increase in sales tax receipts. Cities who have done these kinds of improvements from New York to Long Beach and Fort Worth, Texas, have all reported an increase in sales tax receipts along corridors that have implemented protected bikeways. This is one of the best things we can do for our economic recovery as well. So I am super excited to support this movement forward.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Anyone else wish to comment on this item? Uh, Member Donahue?
I frequently bicycle around Emeryville into Oakland, and I can say that there are sections of the road as it currently is that really are dangerous as a bicyclist. And we have documented deaths right on our border with Oakland for cyclists. And the San Pablo in our area is the major through route if you're trying to get to downtown Oakland. It's really, it's in effect a diagonal street, so there are not a lot of other alternatives. So I think it's important for bicyclists that this happen.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to comment on this item? I'll just add, as the Chair of the Transportation Commission for the county, that this is a, one of the larger regional corridor revitalization and re-imagination projects, is what I'll call it, to really transform the corridor. I think the Vice Mayor and Member Donahue have outlined all the reasons why this project has been in development at the county level and under ACTC's leadership. And as one of the cities on the corridor, we've definitely reviewed the information that Vice Mayor provided around the economic opportunities, also the safety improvements. That's a huge issue for us. This is on the High Injury Network in the county, and so it is a priority for the county's commission to reduce and eliminate bicycle and pedestrian collisions and injuries. And this, the treatments that are proposed in this concept are consistent with doing that. There are, there are community questions, right? When you make a change like this, we heard tonight from one of the speakers, that there are questions about how this will benefit the community and other offsetting impacts. And those things are things that have been discussed with business owners and property owners. And there are solutions that the staff have been developing to do everything from loading and unloading of goods next to stores, the utilization of off-street parking. There are a couple of spots where parking has been more in demand than others. I think the, Mr. Rush is, you know, down at, near the E-CAP building out across the street over there. So I'm familiar with his block and what he's speaking to. And the aggregate percentage that was mentioned by our ACTC staff spans our whole city segment of San Pablo. So we understand that these constraints are different in different parts of the corridor. And as we go into past the concept phase, which is what we're approving tonight, into the more detailed design phase, the staff will work with ours to identify design standards that Caltrans will accept and approve to allow us to do that. I would just add, my primary goal here is, as one voting member of this body, is to ensure that we prioritize safety over convenience. And so on a major corridor such as San Pablo, this is intended to have the space be used to move as many people as possible safely. It's not, its primary goal, in my opinion, is not to provide storage for the use of private vehicles. The convenience of people's vehicle storage, to me, is not a higher priority than the safe movement of people. And as Member Donahue noted, there are no parallel routes to San Pablo through our city that move people to downtown Oakland due to everything from freeways to old city block designs between here and West Oakland. And so it does create a little bit of a bottleneck for us, but it's really necessary in order to improve safety outcomes for everyone in our community that we make some changes. And San Pablo Avenue is one of the few opportunities we have to meaningfully do that. So with that, is there anyone else who wishes to comment on this item? Madam City Manager?
Just to clarify, Mr. Mayor, we are requesting a motion from the council tonight authorizing you as the mayor to sign two letters, one in support of the project and the other directly to ACTC providing comments. So I just wanted to clarify that that is staff's request and recommendation this evening.
Okay, thank you, members. You've heard from the City Manager. The recommendation is to authorize me to sign two letters on behalf of the city as described by the City Manager. Vice Mayor Medina?
I'll move the item.
Okay.
I'll second.
There's a motion by the Vice Mayor and a second by Member Donahue to approve the authorization for the mayor to sign two letters to the Alameda County Transportation Commission related to this project. Please call the board.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouders?
Aye. That authorization has been approved. We will move to item 12.2, which is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville requesting East Bay Community Energy enroll all residential, commercial, and industrial accounts in Renewable 100, with some exceptions, which I won't read, but are outlined in the agenda. And this item is exempt from CEQA. And Nancy Humphrey will be presenting this item up here.
And Nancy, should I promote anyone else for this item?
Well, if Alex DiGiorgio is available, he may be necessary to answer questions if any come up later.
All right, thank you.
All right, and Sherry, if you could start my slides. Okay, so this is another, this is a second round of discussion of service levels at East Bay Community Energy. And tonight, we are considering a new default service for members of the community, both residential and commercial. Next, please. So just as a reminder, EBCE launched with two services. Bright Choice, which had, at the time, greenhouse gas emissions 5% lower than PG&E's at a 1% price discount. And at that time also, they offered Brilliant 100, which was GHG-free service at PG&E price. Later, they added a third service, Renewable 100, which is GHG-free, 100% California-based wind and solar at a price premium of $1 per kilowatt hour. Next. So there's been changes. The, in 2021, the EBCE board voted not to accept a nuclear allocation, which is a complex topic. Oops, I didn't update this slide. Bright Choice, as a result, not only did PG&E's reporting become more accurate, which was one of the positive outcomes, but the GHG emissions for the Bright Choice product went up, not by X percent, and I'm sorry I did not update that, but we can get that answer from Alex if we need it. It went up substantially. And at the same time, Brilliant 100, which was meant to be GHG-free at the same price point as PG&E, was discontinued because it was no longer feasible. As an aside, PG&E achieves 45% of its GHG-free power through the use of nuclear. And with the Diablo Canyon Nuclear Power Plant being decommissioned in three short years, they too will see their GHG mix go up similar to what has already happened with the Brilliant 100 and Bright Choice. Next, please. So we spoke in October of 2021, and the City Council at that time changed the default municipal electric service for municipal accounts to Renewable 100. It had been on Brilliant 100, so we had to make a choice in that case. And council opted to move to the Renewable 100. And at that time, requested staff to bring a proposal to default all community accounts to Renewable 100 service. Next, please. So the community accounts for EBCE, there are about 8,000 EBCE electricity customers in Emeryville. And you can see the split here. It's largely residential, with small, medium, commercial being the next largest, but a lot smaller. And you may wonder how many people have opted out to PG&E. About 2.5% of Emeryville customers have opted back out to PG&E. And just about 2% have chosen to go from the Bright Choice default up to a GHG-free product, whether Brilliant 100 or Renewable 100. All right, next, please. So the question of defaulting the community up to the Renewable 100 service is something that a lot of cities around us are doing or considering. And you can see in this list Albany, Berkeley, Dublin, Hayward Pleasant, and San Leandro have either defaulted, well, have defaulted or about to default to 100 resident, I'm sorry, Renewable 100 for residential customers. Many of them have already defaulted their commercial customers, and a couple more are considering it. You can see, too, that the numbers of account holders who, in reaction to that, either opted out to PG&E or opted back to the Bright Choice option, which is something they can do. All right, next, please. So EBCE Renewable 100 would have zero GHG emissions for all the accounts that stay on that service. The change from the 2005 baseline in electricity, so if you recall, we have a baseline of greenhouse gas emissions that's set at 2,005 levels. And we have goals to reduce that by 40% by 2030 and by 80% by 2050. What EBCE Renewable 100 would do is reduce the electricity GHGs by 100% and therefore reduce the community total, all sources, by 42% and an average cost increase of around 3% to 5.5%. I will note that cost averages are problematic because bills change over the year with weather and with production and with different needs. But this is an annual average expected increase. Next, please. So, yeah, so if we were to default the community to Renewable 100, there would be exemptions for these groups. The people on the two income-qualified programs, either CARE or FARA, plus medical baseline customers, people who have necessary medical equipment and get special rates for that, that accounts for about 16%. Those three together account for 16% of residential accounts. In addition to that, the other exemptions would be customers who have already made a service level selection on the, on the idea that they have already interacted with the system and made a choice. So we're not going to undo their choice. Customers who have opted out to PG&E and large, very large industrial users. Next, please. Everybody, if there were a default change or at any time, is able to change their service level. They can either ask for a different service level, in this case, go back to Bright Choice, or they can opt out to PG&E. There's no cost to change your EBCE service level. If you decide after 60 days of service to change to PG&E from EBCE, there would be a small charge of $5 for a residential account or $25 for a commercial account. And next, please? Yeah, Outreach, thank you. So this was discussed at the Sustainability Committee in January. On March 4th, an email was sent to the business community alerting them to this consideration, linking to the staff report, and informing them how to make public comment. If the resolution is approved, EBCE will do outreach, including two customer notifications by mail and email, and they will offer webinars to explain the change. Next, please. And so the timeline, if this proposal is accepted, it would be considered by the EBCE board in April. Outreach would be conducted in August and September 2022. That would be the EBCE Outreach and City Outreach. EBCE will offer one-on-one assistance as requested, and the change would be implemented October 2022. That's my presentation for tonight.
Okay, thank you. Are there any members who have questions for staff about the resolution and proposal and the presentation? Seeing none, is there a public comment? Members of the public who wish to comment on this item would be afforded three minutes to do so. Sherry, do we receive any written speaker cards?
We did not.
Okay, I see no hands raised, so I will close public comment for this item and move back to the membership. And I would like to offer the opportunity to go first to Member Martinez.
Thank you. This is a really exciting opportunity. I know that when EBCE first formed and we first had the opportunity to set our default product, I was not in favor of going with Renewable 100 because I wanted the agency to get established and make sure we weren't setting ourselves up for more opt-outs than would be reasonable. But I think that this is a really good time to do this. I myself had just opted up to Renewable 100 as a customer some time ago. And it, you know, it cost me less than $8 a month to do that, and I have an electric vehicle that I charge. One thing that I wanted to note is that PG&E had been transitioning customers of electricity to time of use over the past year, and that mostly should have happened in 2021. So when I noticed that in the staff report that there are residential customers in the amount of almost 3,000 who do not have time of use, I was a little alarmed. And I've been working behind the scenes with East Bay Community Energy staff to just double-check these numbers. And it does appear to be true. But what our presumption is at this time is that these are folks, you know, we have a lot of renters in our community and people move around a lot. So if you don't have an established bill with your electricity provider for more than 12 months, you haven't had the opportunity to transition over to a time of use rate. So I just want to put it out there that I will be recommending to EBCE staff, when and if this comes forward in our April meeting, that they are sensitive to people's time of use or regular rate status and that they're addressing that in the mailers and communications that go out to people so they can understand, you know, that their average monthly price isn't necessarily going to be an additional $18 on average, but more like probably a $3 on average if they're in that, that rate setting that they... if they're in that rate setting that they should be at. But I'm excited for this. I think that making a forty-two percent change and from our 2005 goal is amazing. There's, I can't see another way to do that in one fell swoop in this city. It's just so beneficial. And the more cities and regions that go ahead and do this, the more we invest in renewables. And the more those prices come down for not just ratepayers in EBCE's territory, but for all of Californians and frankly, all Americans. Because I think, you know, this federal administration has definitely seen the light in terms of investing in renewables, and I think our state has as well. And we have lofty goals. This is how we get to them.
Thank you, Member Martinez. Member Donahue.
I just want to support everything that Diane just talked about. I'm the alternate for representing our city on the East Bay Community Energy. And I just want to say that there have been so many new facilities in our Northern California region built to generate electricity. And I think that by choosing this, we are in effect supporting the continued development. Right now, it's important that we continue to develop those resources going forward. And so I'm really in support of this.
Thank you. Others wish to comment? Vice Mayor Medina.
It is sometimes odd being on sustainability where Scott and I myself are siloed because we don't get to hear from Member Martinez, who has this really deep wealth of knowledge on this. So I am just really excited to have the opportunity to discuss this with Member Martinez and fully support her comments.
Thank you. I just have a one, it's a more of a question. Just understanding how this implements for folks. Let's say I was to opt out for whatever reason, and then I was to leave my apartment or my residence. Let's say I sell my home. When that account ends and someone moves back in, does the service then default now again to Renewable 100? Or do they have to, do they, when they move in, are they given an option when they move in?
To my understanding, that's a new account, and so they're defaulted into the default product.
Okay, so if somebody leaves the city who's opted into Bright 100 or whatever, they would, the new person who took over the account for that address would get a Renewable 100?
New accounts will be on the default.
Okay, great. Is there any further discussion from members?
I just want to make one comment that, you know, customers will always have the choice. You still have the ability to go in there and decide if you want to go back to the basic product. But I think most of our customers here in Emeryville have shown themselves to be progressives in the area of the environment, and I think that they, what Member Donahue said is exactly right. We take the proceeds from this product and reinvest them right back here in our community. So folks might or might not be aware, we have a new wind facility on Altamont Pass named after former supervisor Scott Hagerty, which is producing enough electricity on an annual basis to power forty-seven thousand of our homes here in our territory. So, you know, we're investing in projects like that in Alameda County and elsewhere in the West that bring us that one hundred percent renewable energy. And I think it will be a real feather in our cap and another reason to be green on St. Patrick's Day.
Yes, it is. A different type of green, right? Anyone else? If not, there is a resolution before us, and I would like to offer it to our EBCE representatives. Would you like to make a motion?
I will make the motion.
I'll second.
A motion has been made by Member Martinez and seconded by Member Donahue to approve this resolution. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouders?
Aye. The resolution has been approved. Thank you. Very excited about decreasing the GHG footprint. Just a quick question, when would that actually take effect for customers?
October 2022.
Okay, so we have about six months. Okay, great. All right, next up is item 12.3, which is a first reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Emeryville, adding chapter forty-one to Title V of the Emeryville Municipal Code, the right to recall for hotel and cardroom employees. It's a subsequent determination of exempt, and am I turning this over to you, Mr. Kennedy? Or is Mr. Smalley presenting first?
I'll be handling this. Chad Smalley, Economic Development Housing Manager.
Great.
I'll have Sherry pull up my presentation.
One moment, please. There we go.
Thank you, Sherry. So yes, good evening, Mayor Bouders, members of the City Council. Again, Chad Smalley, Economic Development Housing Manager, here to give you a brief presentation on a draft right-to-recall ordinance. Next slide, please. So just, we've talked about this before, but for the benefit of, and just to remind folks, what is right-to-recall? Right-to-recall, in a simplified way, is the concept that after layoff, the workers that have been laid off would be recalled back to work on the basis of their length of service or their seniority. So all workers who previously held or can be trained to hold a position that were laid off are notified of any new openings for those positions. There's a time period after that notification for the employee to respond as to whether they want to be considered for that position or not. And then if multiple employees respond, the position is offered to the longest-tenured responding employee. Next slide, please. So for background, back in February of last year, the City Council requested a future item on right-to-recall. And on April sixteenth, twenty-one, the governor signed SB ninety-three, which has some similarities to right-to-recall, and I'll return to this in a moment. On April twentieth, we held a study session with you, and the council gave us some input on broad policy topics and the direction to prepare a draft ordinance. For context's sake, many other cities have adopted similar right-to-recall ordinances. Oakland adopted theirs in July of twenty, Los Angeles in April of twenty. A status report is requested by City of Los Angeles staff sometime this month. Long Beach adopted one in May of twenty and removed the sunset date that was originally encoded into that ordinance due to the fact that the COVID pandemic was ongoing. San Diego adopted theirs in September of twenty, and theirs sunset a few weeks ago. And all of these ordinances, they're all very similar, right-to-recall ordinances. They do vary in terms of what industries are covered, but typically they're hotels, event centers, and airport services and building services. These are the industries that were most dramatically affected by the COVID-19 pandemic, resulting in enormous number of layoffs. Next slide, please. So in our case, the draft ordinance that's been prepared for you, the applicability here in Emeryville would be to hotels and to cardrooms, and then ancillary businesses that are connected to those businesses. So if there's a restaurant associated with a hotel, they would be covered as a covered employer. The length of the recall benefit, that is, for how long are folks going to be laid off, individuals to be recalled for new positions, would be twelve months after the end of the COVID-19 declared emergency in Emeryville, the locally declared emergency. The length of the notice period, that is, how long do laid-off employees have to respond to an offer to return to work, and the draft ordinance is ten calendar days. And we just want to note again, as we did in the study session, that it's important because Measure C is a voter-adopted initiative, has labor provisions applicable to hotels in Emeryville, and we sought to ensure consistency with that measure through using the same definitions that are in Measure C and in the change of ownership provisions, which I'll return to in a moment as well. The enforcement mechanism of the draft ordinance is that it creates a private right of action. That is, an employee that feels that the ordinance has been violated can bring an action against their employer, or former employer in this case. And there is no sunset date for this draft ordinance because, as I mentioned, it's effective for twelve months after the declared emergency. So that's unknown at this point in time. It depends on the duration of that declared emergency in Emeryville. Next slide. We did another round of outreach once this was drafted, and the reaction I'd characterized as mixed in talking to the hotels and the cardroom. The length of the notice period was something that was cited as a concern by some folks in the hotel industry because of their concern about their ability to quickly hire in the event business comes back quickly. They wanted to be able to accommodate a request for, you know, if there's a lot of bookings for rooms, they wanted to be able to hire all the housekeepers and other staff on board. And they pointed out that if they're unable to do so, the ordinance...
Chad, Chad, I need to, you're doing something with your microphone. We were going into an echo chamber and coming back. If you could just stabilize where you're sitting in relation to your microphone before you continue.
Sure, sorry about that.
Thank you.
So how much you heard of that, I'm not sure.
We heard it, but the last thirty seconds, you were starting to go in and out on us.
Got it, okay. And so that, when this concern was raised, it was in the context of, well, we would lose that business if we can't staff up fast enough. There was also comments regarding the administrative burden this creates from some quarters and concern that this creates a disincentive to hire since now there's this whole process that is created where a registered letter needs to be sent to the laid-off employees, and there's tracking of that. And again, this isn't universally held, this concern, because of SB ninety-three. The hotels are already covered by SB ninety-three. And so from some of the hotels' perspective, this is not much of a lift for them because there's a lot of overlap between SB ninety-three and this proposed ordinance. And so they didn't view it as materially difficult for them to comply with. Recent concerns about the inclusion of this ordinance that was published initially with the staff report, that there were concerns from labor organizations expressed about the change of ownership provisions. And so on these last two points, SB ninety-three and change of ownership provision, I'll get into that in a little bit more detail. Next slide, please. So SB ninety-three, as I mentioned, was signed by the governor in April of twenty-one, and it covers hotels, clubs, event centers, airport hospitality, and service providers, and janitorial and building maintenance. The length of, this is where the italicized lines on this slide are where the draft ordinance differs from SB ninety-three. In our case, the ordinance applies to hotels, yes, but it also applies to cardrooms, which is something that's not covered by SB ninety-three. So that's a departure. The state law requires five-business-days notice. Once that notice is provided to employees, the employer has to wait for five-business-days before filling that position. And as I mentioned, ours is ten calendar days. So ours is longer and affords the employees more time to respond. The enforcement of the state law is done through the Division of Labor Standards Enforcement. The Labor Commissioner's Office was given some budget to do this. There's fines and those, their enforcement actions are triggered by claims submitted to the state. Our enforcement action as drafted is, it creates a right to private action. And then finally, the state law sunsets on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And as I mentioned, we don't have a specific sunset date. It's for twelve months after. Then ever, the COVID-19 locally-declared emergency is deemed to be over, it ends. The state law notably does, expressly provides that there's no provision on greater standards imposed by local government, which is the case for all of these things I just mentioned. We add a covered employer. We extend the notice period. We don't have a sunset date. And so we view the draft ordinance as consistent with SB ninety-three. Next slide, please. Change of ownership provision. So as I mentioned, and as I believe the city attorney has communicated, there were some concerns relating to the intersection of this ordinance with the Measure C. The ordinance is intended to apply whether or not a business is sold. And in our initial draft, it did not, and this was unintentional, it did not cover the situation that would happen if an employee were laid off from a hotel, Measure C-covered employer. And then the hotel changed ownership subsequent to that, but it was still during the COVID-declared emergency. And that hotel wanted to rehire. So we wanted to make this more clear. The Measure C already has a worker-retention policy encoded into it. At the change of ownership, the new owner is required to retain all of the employees for ninety days. And if they lay off any employee during that ninety-day period, there is a twenty-four-month recall period that kicks in. So the changes are on your screen right now in strike-through and underlined format from the version that was originally published. And that is that we broadened, clarified that if the ownership of a covered employer, that's whether it's a cardroom or a hotel, changes after the separation of employee, but it's the same business, that the ordinance still applies. And we also, next slide, please. So we broadened this to cover all of the covered employers, and then we clarify that Measure C still does intersect, and it still does apply to the circumstances that are spelled out in Measure C, unchangeable ownership. Next slide, please. So next steps, and to wrap this up, we recommend adoption of the draft ordinance, our first reading of the ordinance. The next steps, if, should you do so, is we would start to develop regulations and guidance around how to implement this and some of the case-specific details that always come up from employers. And we would do educational outreach to the employers. There's only six employers covered by this as drafted. So we view that as achievable with our existing resources. And so with that, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have with the assistance, and I'd like to acknowledge the assistance of John Kennedy in putting this together.
Okay, thank you. Are there members who have clarifying or technical questions about the draft ordinance or the presentation? Member Donahue.
Did all of these six businesses get, you know, are they fully aware of everything as is currently said? That, you know, you talk to them, you know that they are fully aware. They're not being blindsided by this? Is that right, Chad?
They're not all blindsided. I've talked to, they've all been talked to at some point about this. And three of them, I've had extended conversations with those businesses.
Okay, one last question. Is there any threatened litigation from any of those businesses to the city?
Not that I'm aware of, to your question. Okay, other members who have questions? Okay, we're going to move now to public comment. Members of the public who wish to comment on this item will be afforded up to three minutes to do so. And Sherry, did we receive any written comment cards?
We did not.
Okay. Sherry, would you please promote Ty Hudson to be our first speaker? Good evening, Mr. Hudson. You'll have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Bouders and members of the City Council. My name is Ty Hudson, and I'm with Unite Here Local Twenty-eight Fifty, the Hotel and Food Service and Gaming Workers Union in the East Bay and North Bay. I want to, first of all, thank the City Council and city staff for their work on this ordinance. It's very, very appreciated by our union and our members and... It's very, very appreciated by our union and our members and lots of hotel and food service and gaming workers who aren't members of our union, I'm sure, as well. As you all know, and as Mr. Smalley mentioned, hotel, food service, and other hospitality workers, including gaming workers, had been among the most dramatically impacted by the layoffs coming from the COVID pandemic. And we are all, many of us are breathing a sigh of relief as the Omicron wave subsides. But there are still many, many workers in those most affected industries who have let, who have yet to return to work. Some businesses, especially on the food and beverage side of these sectors, have still not opened at all and/or have opened it very minimally. This ordinance that's before you is very, very similar to the ordinance passed in Oakland and other cities, as was already explained by staff. And it has, I can tell you, in Oakland allowed many, many people who otherwise would have been completely adrift without much opportunity to return to work, has allowed them to return to work. And has been a huge lifeline for a lot of people. And we believe it would be the same here in Emeryville. And so we encourage you to approve the ordinance tonight. We support the amendments, the clarifying amendments that were put forward in the amended ordinance to clarify what, you know, what happens when changes of ownerships occur. And again, we thank you for your support and thank you for your work on this ordinance.
Thank you. I also understand, Mr. Hudson, that you may be offering or available for translation services for other speakers this evening. Is that correct?
Yes, that's right. Some folks who are monolingual Spanish speakers may need translation. Hopefully, they'll, I think they'll indicate that. And I will absolutely do my very best to translate accurately.
Okay. The next speaker I'd like to promote then is Lucy. Buenas noches, Lucy, quieres que Ty te traduzca? She needs to unmute, Stone.
There she is.
Hello?
Hello?
Hello, Lucy?
Sí.
Si, quieres que Ty te traduzca ahora?
Sí, por favor.
Okay, gracias, tienes tres minutos.
Okay, mi nombre es Lucia Rubio y tengo 27 años trabajando como housekeeper en el hotel Hilton Garden Inn. Durante la pandemia fui descansada por ocho meses. Afortunadamente he podido regresar a trabajar, pero muchos otros trabajadores todavía no han podido regresar. Para que Emeryville recupere de verdad, es necesario que todos los trabajadores de Emeryville recuperen, por favor. Aprüben la ordenanza del derecho de regresar al trabajo, igual como lo han aprobado en Oakland y muchas otras ciudades. Gracias.
Good evening, my name is Lucia. And I have worked for 27 years at the Hilton Garden Inn in Emeryville. During the pandemic, I was laid off for eight months. But unfortunately, many other workers have not yet returned. In order for Emeryville to truly recover, it's necessary for all of the workers of Emeryville to recover. So please approve this ordinance, just like they have in Oakland and other cities. Thank you.
Gracias, Lucy, buenas noches. Okay, the next speaker I'd like to recognize is Maria Gonzalez. We're waiting for her to unmute. She's put her hand down. Did we do that, or did she do that, Sheri?
We did that, and I've asked her to unmute, so.
Let's take talking permitted away for a moment and see if she can figure out how to do that. And re-raise her hand for her, please, and then we'll recognize Bruno. Hello?
Hello?
Hi, Bruno, welcome.
Hi, good evening. I will try to use my English first. First of all, good evening, all ladies and gentlemen. My name is Bruno Alvarez. I was working for Hyatt House in Emeryville about 19 years. Last year, unfortunately, I was working, no, it's not working, for about seven months. And I'm a really lucky guy. And I was still working, but another coworker is not coming back to the job. For for the better recovery for the Emeryville city, it's maybe better, it's like all my coworkers back and for still work because it's like, in my opinion, it's like I needed the old people working. Because it's like, everybody, I needed the work and I needed the money. We needed to sustain the families and and get it the other way. Thank you, sorry.
Thank you, did great, Bruno. Thank you. Maria, si quieres hablar, avance la mano, por favor.
Go back and re-allow her to talk. Oh, there she is. Oh, no.
Maria?
Sí. ¿Si me oye? Buenas noches.
Buenas noches, Maria, quieres que Ty te traduzca ahora?
Sí, por favor.
Okay. Tienes tres minutos, Maria.
Muchas gracias. Hola, mi nombre es María Gonzalez y tengo 15 años trabajando en the housekeeper in Hyatt House in Emeryville. Durante la pandemia yo también estuve casi alrededor de un año descansando. Antes de cumplir el año tuve la oportunidad de regresar a trabajar. Algunos compañeros míos no han podido regresar y necesitamos que regresen para que Emeryville vuelva a agarrar su su otra vez establezca. Necesitamos que esos compañeros regresen a trabajar. Ya en Oakland y otras ciudades han estado, han aceptado la, han aprobado la ordenanza de que regresen a trabajar los compañeros. Me gustaría mucho que ustedes también la aceptaran. Y necesitamos a sus compañeros trabajar tanto para que Emeryville renata y tanto para nosotros mismos también que necesitamos que nos ayude. Este, la carga de trabajo cada día también está empezada. Yo nomás quiero dejarles en el aire una pequeña pregunta. Si no regresan estos compañeros a trabajar, ¿qué va a ser la ciudad de Emeryville con tanta gente? Gracias.
De nada. Ty?
Yes, thank you. My name is Maria Gonzalez. Good evening. I've worked at the Hyatt House Hotel in Emeryville for about 15 years. During the pandemic, I was laid off for about a year. And some of my coworkers, though, have still not returned to work. We really need them to come back in order for Emeryville to really reestablish itself and for Emeryville to be reborn. We need to have everybody back at work. And I just want to leave you with one question. If not everybody goes back to work, what is the city going to do with so many people unemployed? Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, gracias a todos por venir a compartir tu voz esta noche. We will move now to discussion. Are there any members who wish to comment first? Member Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank the community for coming out and speaking tonight on behalf of this ordinance. It's been a long time coming. Folks probably know we've had some staffing changes in our city attorney's office. And I want to show my deep gratitude for the staff who carried the torch forward, Chad Smalley and Christine Daniel, and then, and now John Kennedy joining us on the team. Because I'm very, very pleased to see this ordinance here. I think it will do a lot of good for our community. I lived at Hyatt House for a month in 2016, and I felt very taken care of by the family of workers there. And I, as we recover as a city, as a community of businesses, we can't leave behind the people who built those businesses up and who are such an important part of our city. So I will be very pleased to support this tonight.
Thank you, others. I'm not going to add much at this time, but I would just like to thank also the staff for their work in preparing this ordinance. I would like to thank the advocates who represent the workers and have come and worked in partnership with myself and city staff on some of the details in this ordinance over the last year to ensure that we adequately protect everybody in our community. And so thank you all for your partnership because we're all stronger when we all have equitable footing in the community. With that, if it would be, if everybody would indulge me, I would like to make a motion to approve this ordinance.
A second.
Okay, thank you. There's a motion by Mayor Bouders and a second by Member Donahue to approve the ordinance. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouders?
Aye. Gracias, buenas noches todos. We are going to move now to agenda item 12.4, which is our check-in on the resolution for Assembly Bill 361 to allow us to continue to have meetings remotely. There is no staff presentation on this item. Is there any public members who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, is there any discussion? Seeing none, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Medina, second by Member Donahue to approve this resolution. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouders?
Aye, the resolution is approved. That concludes our action items. Item 13 is department head reports. Madam City Manager, do we have any department heads who are reporting this evening?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Item 13 is concluded. Item 14 is future agenda item requests from council members. Members, is there anyone who wishes to request a future item? Member Welch?
Yes, I would like to request that we review the noise ordinance waiver to discuss what information needs to be included in the application to council.
Okay, so discussing the noise ordinance waiver to ensure that we have all the information we need when an application comes before council. I support the request. Madam City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Welch didn't have the benefit of the report that we presented to the council last spring on this topic. So I'm wondering if, before we schedule that, again, we could maybe, I could give her that information, and we could have a meeting, and then if that report doesn't answer your questions, then we could put it on the council agenda, if that's acceptable?
Member Welch, is that acceptable to you, it's your prerogative?
I feel fine with that suggestion.
Okay.
Just as a starting, to give you the grounding.
That's fine. I think that what I'm hearing Member Welch say, based on, and I don't want to speak for you, Member Welch, so if you would like to speak, I would actually defer to you first. Would you like to say anything else?
No, just echoing what I had said earlier in our discussion with the applicant. I was just a little concerned because it did feel like there was a breakdown in giving the council all the information that we would need to make a decision. So I just wanted to, for us to just review, are we sure that we have everything in the ordinance right now as far as information that we would like? I just feel like it would be fair to revisit it, given the night's events.
Okay, I understand. I understand and support the request. So there's been an offer from the city manager to meet with her, but if there is still information that she would like to present, does everyone agree to have a council agenda item to discuss? Okay, I see five thumbs up, so that will be the direction on that item. Thank you, Madam City Manager and Member Welch. Anyone else have a future item request? Okay, seeing none, that brings us to item 15, which is adjournment. May the road rise to meet you, may the wind be always at your back, may the sunshine warm upon your face. And until we meet again, may he hold you or she hold you in the palm of your hand, their hand. So with that, an Irish blessing to send you. The other one I could have given you is, you know, I'm almost reluctant to say it, but may those who love us, love us, but for those who do not love us, may God turn their ankles so we know them by their limb. So with that, Happy St. Patrick's Day, be kind to one another, and may the luck of the Irish be with you. The time is 9:36, Madam Clerk, we are adjourned.